Okay, having a quorum, I would like to open the last planning commission meeting of the year for December 16th. Ms. Rodriguez, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Jacobs.
Here.
Vice Chair Justus.
Here.
Chair Bartlet.
Here.
Mr. Cotto, under our preliminary matters, I guess our first item is to review the minutes of December 2nd. So I guess I'll be looking for any comments or changes from the commission on those minutes and then the accompanying resolution 018-10. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody put their lights on. Ms. Schwartz.
I'm ready to make a motion to approve the minutes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'd be looking for a second. Okay, any discussion before we call a vote? Mr. Jordan? Oh, okay. All those in favor of the minutes and resolutions as they stand? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. Okay, Mr. Cotto, any requests for continuances, withdrawals, or postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items?
No, thank you.
Any announcements and appeals?
Nope.
The commission did want to congratulate Randy Rouse on his recent appointment to the city council, and I would like to also congratulate the three planning commissioners that put in a diligent effort in seeking that appointment as well. I think they all represented planning commission very strongly, so I'm proud of their involvement, but I'm glad to have them here on the commission, so hopefully that makes it a win-win, so.
And, Mr. Chair, congratulations to you and your reappointment. We're thrilled to have you continue on the commission with us.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I didn't know if this would be my last meeting, but it looks like I have four more years to enjoy myself, so.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Lodge.
Just a comment about the interview process. Partway through, council member, after hearing people and seeing the passion, the concern about Santa Barbara and what everybody had to offer and their interest in the city of Santa Barbara, he said, "45 of you are going to be disappointed, but don't go away, you know? Get involved." And there was really impressive.
Well, it was an interesting process because it did become so public. It wasn't like just a secret ballot and you get the answer, so I think in that sense it was fun to watch and see how it all unfolded, so. I'm glad that the three of you had the gumption to really get in and stir it up, so, thank you. Okay, with that, I'll open public comment, and this would be for items not on today's agenda. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment. We'll go to our first item, which is a new item. It's the application for Second Baptist Church at 1032 East Mason Street. And Mr. Gullett will be doing the staff presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This project includes a new 3,960-square-foot, six-unit apartment building. Each of the six units is one bedroom. It would be, there would each be 540 square feet. The project also includes conversion of an existing residential unit to church use, and that unit is 1,599 square feet. The project would result in seven units that would be price restricted and age restricted to low-income seniors. The site also includes changes to the parking lot, landscaping, and for accessibility. The 25,000-square-foot lot is located at the corners of East Mason Street and Voluntario Street, across from Franklin School. The zoning is R2, and the general plan designation is residential and 12 units per acre. This is a perspective view of the site. This is the sanctuary building and the duplex building. The sanctuary is approximately 2,200 square feet. The duplex building is approximately 2,300 square feet, and what would remain as residential with the project is a 720-square-foot unit on the second floor here. This is a state density bonus project. State law allows up to nine units on this property, since more than 20% of the units qualify as low-income. State law also allows up to three incentives or concessions, since more than 30% of the units are low-income. 100% of the units would be low-income with the project. The applicant is electing to have one density bonus unit for a total of seven. The general plan designation allows six, so state law would trump that. And the three concessions that the applicant has requested under state law include having the new apartment building be six units, which isn't typically allowed in the R2, to allow outdoor living space consistent with the R3 and R4 zones, outdoor living space requirements rather than the R2, and to allow encroachment of two parking spaces in the front setback of Voluntario. The applications your commission is considering today is a parking modification to allow less than the required automobile parking, a front setback modification off of East Mason Street to allow bicycle parking, conditional use permit for church expansion, the R2 zone, and the change to the lot that the church is on in the R2 zone, and a development plan for conversion of that ground-floor residential unit to church use, which is indicated as a fellowship hall in the plans. Here's the site plan. The new six-unit apartment building would be located in the southeast corner of the lot. The parking lot would be changed. The curb cuts shifted away from the property lines. There would be one-way circulation through the parking lot and a new trash enclosure. Also included is a new accessible parking space in front and accessible ramps and landings to access the church and the fellowship hall. This project was reviewed twice by ABR, February 8th and August 9th of this year. The staff report, for some reason, was copied and didn't include the August 9th minutes, and I left those for your review. In the August 9th hearing, ABR stated that the project provided appropriate amount of open space and size, bulk, and scale were appropriate for the neighborhood. As stated in the staff report, this project is consistent with guidance of that housing element that encourages low-income senior infill housing. It's also consistent with the land-use element, description of neighborhood, and the church use. Again, the land-use designation allows for up to six units, but state law dictates what the density can be in this case. So the existing parking is 23 spaces. Under current zoning, there would be 25 required for existing, so it would be four spaces for the duplex and 21 for the church. What's proposed is no change from the number of seats provided in the church, so it would still be 21 for the church, and the low-income senior units are assessed at half a space per unit per the code, so there would still be 25 required. There would be a loss of one space between the existing condition and the proposed. The attached parking study to the staff report indicates that 19 spaces would be needed to meet peak demand of the church at this time, and considering the future residential use with the seven units of the property. The bike racks are located in the non-residential 30-foot setback off of East Mason Street. The non-residential setback applies to the bicycle parking because it's only required because it's associated with the church. One bicycle parking space is needed for every three required for the church. So the staff report indicates that the closest rack is 22 feet from the right-of-way. It's actually 16. I apologize for that area. It does indicate that it's 14 feet to the pad. Staff is supporting this modification because of the location of the bicycle parking is easily visible from, or it's apparent from the street where bicycles can park. It's proximate to the entrance. ABR stated that the location was acceptable, and there are conditions included that require adequate screening of the bicycle parking. Additionally, the R2 requirement for automobile parking is 15 feet, and it's, and the rack would be beyond the 15-foot setback for automobile parking. The city environmental analysts reviewed this project and determined that it was exempt pursuant to the infill exemption, and staff is recommending that one condition be added. This condition requires a dedication of space at the corner of the lot up here. I don't know if the commissioners noticed at the site visit, but there is a diagonal ramp here that goes all the way up to the property, and there isn't a city-standard landing, so it'd be hard to, it's not standard for wheelchairs, strollers, to round this corner. So what the city is asking for is for an easement that would provide for a minimum four-foot-wide landing at the back of that access ramp. City staff discussed this with the applicant, and the applicant appears to be receptive to this condition. So staff is recommending that the commission approve the project, making the findings in Section 11 of the staff report subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A with the added condition on the previous slide. And that concludes my remarks. Chelsea Swanson from Transportation Planning is also here and available. We're both available for questions.
Great, thank you very much. With that, we'll go to the applicant presentation. I believe Ms. Plomin will probably be starting off.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Pastor Shepherd from the Second Baptist Church wants to say just a quick几句.
Perfect. Yep, oh, there we go.
Hello, welcome. Good evening to everyone. It's good to see you today. Thank you for the opportunity. I've been, the church has been around for 100 years. They left from Gutierrez Street and moved to the present site. We've been consistently the same size, fairly small church. I've been the pastor here for five years, and I looked at the land that we had in the backpack there, and I said, "Oh, boy, it sure is a poor use of the land. It's just sitting there by itself." And I thought that the church could possibly give something back to the community, and I know that there's a problem with low-income housing for seniors, and so I got with my board and we discussed it, and we thought it'd be a great idea to do that and to see if we can get it done. And that's how we ended up with Dede Piker, and he's a great architect. We hope that you all like the project and that we can move forward with it. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much for coming in. Ms. Plomin?
Good afternoon. Next slide, Dede. So Dan's gone through much of this stuff, so I'll move through the elements that are redundant pretty quickly. This just gives you context for the site and the streets, and then here, many of you came to the site, some of you were not at our site visits. We have some photos of the church from Mason and Voluntario. The back corner there is the location of the proposed senior apartment building in the parking lot. Next slide. And then this just gives you a neighborhood context for the church. Directly across the street, there is a Housing Authority project where they rehabilitated an existing apartment building, and so the neighborhood is really coming up, I think, and it's quite nice. Just down Voluntario, there was another rehab that the Housing Authority did as well. Next slide. So as Pastor Shepherd shared, there are really three primary objectives that the church had. One was doing something that could contribute to the community, and that, they thought, was providing some affordable senior rental units, and then make use of the underdeveloped land in the urban area, because we know that's an objective of the general plan that we have now and future general plans, and then also working to enhance the neighborhood. Next slide. So we have just a little bit over an acre, and as Dan indicated, there's an existing church and fellowship hall on the site. The church was built a long time ago, and originally was permitted with two residential units, and since then, the bottom-floor unit was converted to a fellowship hall, which is going to be all legalized essentially with the conditional use permit and the development plan. Upstairs is the 720-square-foot, one-bedroom apartment that will become part of the senior project essentially, and then there are 23 spaces on the site. The general plan and zoning allow for residential, and it's relatively flat site. Next slide. And this gives you the existing site plan. It shows you the location of the parking lot, the sanctuary, and the fellowship hall. So as Dan indicated, we're applying under state density bonus law, and he's explained the law fairly thoroughly. I've got a slide on that as well. So there are six new affordable senior apartments. Each is 540 square feet with one bedroom, and each has a 120-square-foot patio or balcony, and then there is a common open space area on the site that I'll show you in the next slide. It is a project-based Section 8 housing project, so we had submitted an application and were approved for guaranteed Section 8 applicants, and that was done maybe six to nine months ago. So we have that approval. I think the Housing Authority, City Housing Authority authorized two projects for that. We have 22 parking spaces and, back, back? Yeah, and as Dan pointed out, we're making a number of accessibility improvements to the church at the entrance. Next slide. The CP will validate the church use and convert the residential unit to the fellowship hall, as I mentioned. We're removing five trees on the site, three palms, an acacia, and a pepper tree, and then we're requesting the three concessions under state density bonus law and two modifications. These just give you the basic project statistics. This is the gross square foot of the proposed building. The building coverage is about 28%. Landscaping's 24%, and hardscape, which includes the walkways and the driveways, is 48%, and we have about 11% open space. So here's the proposed site plan. Gives you, you can see in orange is the location of the proposed senior apartment building. As Dan indicated, there'll be a one-way entrance and exit on the property. Right now, you'll enter off Mason and exit off of Voluntario, and as you can see at the front of the church, there are a number in the tan color, there's a ramp that's going to be installed, and a terrace that is going to be provided in front of the fellowship hall as well as in front of the existing sanctuary. So that's going to improve the access significantly at the front of the church for those that are handicapped. And you can see there'll be a lot of new landscaping provided all along the southern and western property boundaries and throughout the site, and then there's a common open space area just right in the corner. I'm sorry, oh, thank you. That's much better, right in this area. Next slide, please. So these elevations just give you the context. So you can see this is the east elevation from Voluntario. Here's the church. This is the proposed apartment building, and I wanted to share with you, originally, Piker Group Architects was not the architect on the project. We started working with them, just primarily with land use consulting, because they needed some assistance to navigate the affordable housing policies and whatnot. So we have reviewed the plans, and we'll be working on the construction drawings, but one of the things we identified when we were reviewing is that the roof had some complicated elements to it in that it had some flat sections, and so when we put the story poles up, we actually had them installed to mimic this new pitch in the roof. This would simplify the roof significantly in terms of construction and protect it from any future leaks. So that gives you the idea of what a pitched roof would be, and the maximum height on that is, I think, 24 and 1/2 feet at the peak. This gives you the context from Mason Street, and then you can also see with that dashed line where the new pitch would be. Next slide. So this is the southern elevation of the project, and this shows the pitch as well, and on the southern elevation, because of the grade changes, the maximum height is 238, and then the plate height here is 188. And this is the western elevation, and then here again, on the northern elevation, we show a pitch there where the max is 248. So you can see from the elevations that the architectural design at this point is fairly simple. It's arts and crafts. It's designed essentially to match the church and the surrounding neighborhood, but we'll be working with ABR to resolve some of the issues that they raised and modifying the design somewhat, but the idea is to make sure that the design is consistent and compatible with the neighborhood. This just provides an example of one of the floor plans, and the floor plans are all essentially the same, and it provides the living and dining area, kitchen here, a bedroom, and then here's the 12-by-10 private patio that each unit will have. State density bonus law, as Dan mentioned, and I think most of you are well aware, that the state passed a law that creates incentives for the provision of affordable housing in the community, and there's two things that they do that are primary to that, and that is allowing and guaranteeing density increases and concessions. Next slide. So if you have a certain percent of low income, you get a 35% increase in density. If you have 30% of those units as low-income, you're guaranteed three concessions, and concessions are essentially similar to what a modification is, that you would generally approve. They might be setback, it might be height, it might be open space requirements. Next slide. So in this case, and I know you haven't seen a lot of these applications, and I think we've brought all of them forward. We apply this law in many other jurisdictions, but the requested density increase is one unit. It's about a 17% increase in density, and the concessions, as Dan laid out for you, was to allow an attached multifamily structure in the R2 zone. You could have six units with three different duplexes on this property, but when we worked with staff, we all realized there was no way that was going to be able to happen, and this was the most efficient way to provide as many senior affordable units as we could on the site. The other, second concession is to allow the application of the R3, R4 open yard requirements rather than the R2, so it would be reduced, but because the project essentially mirrors an R3, R4 project, we felt that the, meeting those open yard requirements of R3, R4 was really appropriate, and in fact, we exceed them for the second-story units. We have larger patios than would typically be required. And then the third one is to allow the two parking spaces along Voluntario and the front yard setback. This gives you an idea of where the private outdoor living space is provided, and then the units on the second floor have the exact same patios, and then here's the common open space area. So total open space on the side is 11%, and here's where the parking concession is. We would extend into the setback there about, I think it's five feet. The two modifications, as Dan laid out for you, was one to allow for reduced parking and the other to allow for bike parking in the front yard. I think it's just important to note that in ATE's study, they did indicate that the Institute of Transportation Engineers demand that they identify for this type of use is 17 spaces. The actual demand, which was based on site visits by the engineers, showed 19 spaces at a max, and that maximum really occurs for two hours on Sunday, so the bulk of the time that parking lot is empty. You know, there may be one or two cars parked into it. So the provision of 22 spaces on the site will meet the demand, meet and exceed the demand. And then, next slide. So this just shows you the encroachment into the front yard setback, as Dan laid out for you, for the bicycle parking, and there is landscaping shown there that would screen that. Next slide. So as we indicated, we've been to ABR. We went twice with the former architect. The ABR was supportive of the project, did have some comments where they wanted us to work on reducing the second-story mass, particularly the roof area over the common open space, and studying some of the pilaster, so we'll be working with ABR as we move through the process, and PGA is now formally the architect. So when we were at the site visit, some questions came up by the planning commissioners, and one in particular had to do with the modification for the, I'm sorry, the concession for the two parking spaces along Voluntario, and the question was, can we save the trees that are in this area? And I think it was Commissioner Lodge that actually asked the question. And so this just gives you an idea of what spaces, if we were to save, there's a nice pepper tree right here. If we were to save that, you would lose this space. There's a palm here. To be honest, the church would rather not save the palm because they tend to be sort of a hazard with the palm fronds falling, but they'd be willing to do something else and plant a specimen tree there if the, if the planning commission felt that that was the way they wanted to go. So if you were to pursue this avenue, we'd be down to 20 parking spaces, which would still meet the demand and have two specimen trees right there at the entrance to the, or the exit along Voluntario. Next slide. We also had a letter from the neighbor directly to the west, and they had some concerns once they saw the story poles, as all neighbors do, as they can be alarming, and they had, they submitted a letter to the planning commission, which we've read, and we actually met with the neighbors to talk to them about their concerns, and I'm not sure if they're here today. I don't, oh, there she is, Mary. So I met with her this morning, and the main concerns had to do with the fencing along the property line that was the boundary between the two sites, and wanting to make sure that a new fence was constructed that would provide some screening, and the church is happy to provide that fence. It'll be between six and eight feet, and I've got a slide that will show you that, and then would reduce in height as we move towards Mason Street. The landscaping, we looked at the landscape plan and realized that probably some better screening material could be planted right along the area where the new apartment building is proposed, and commonly, we found that stenocarpus and malaluka are plants that are proposed by many of the landscape architects we work with, but we're going to sit down with the neighbor prior to going back to ABR. But we're going to sit down with the neighbor prior to going back to ABR and make sure that the placement and the type of landscaping is suitable for them. And then the, one of the other comments that they had raised had to do with the eve width, because the eve does extend into the setback further. There's a six-foot setback between the apartment and the property line. And right now, the way the building is designed, it's a three-foot extension into the setback. And we looked at it, and we thought we could at least reduce that to one and a half to two feet. So that would respond to their last concern. Next slide. This just gives you an idea. This is where we would add the screening. And then this is the area where you'd have a six-to-eight-foot fence, and then 42 inches down in this area. So as we've talked about, we think there's a significant benefit associated with the project. You'd have seven senior units that would be affordable in price. It makes use of an underdeveloped site in our urban area, enhances the neighborhood, and helps to fulfill those housing element objectives, which include senior housing, and rental housing, and affordable housing, and urban infill. So it meets all of those, and helps the city fulfill those. Next slide. So our requested action by you today is to approve the six new units, grant the three concessions, approve the two mods, the CUP, and the development plan to allow for the conversion to the fellowship hall. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I know the pastor would be happy to answer if you have any. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. You're pretty much on the money at 15 minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Gullett. I just want to caution the commission regarding the altered roof form. ABR hasn't reviewed that new roof form. Unless the commission has serious issues with the roof form, I would advise that you defer that aspect of the project to ABR.
Great, thank you. Okay, with that, I would like to open public comment. Looks like we have two public speakers. So first will be Ruben Gill, followed by Betsy Kramer. And you each have about two minutes.
Great, thank you. My name is Ruben Gill, and I live on Wilson Avenue, which is right across from Second Baptist Church. And so as members, and I was discussing actually with other neighbors in the area as well. So as members of the East Side community and neighbors of Second Baptist Church for over 11 years, we, I had disappointed, but actually, it's really just a strong concern that we have. I'd like to change that language. The plans to develop the property and add residential units. The East Side is already extremely impacted. And I think what a lot of people don't understand about the East Side, I was born and raised in Santa Barbara and grew up on the East Side. There are a lot of families that will never, ever qualify for affordable housing, because they're undocumented. And the fact of it is, there are already plenty of families that are doubled up. And so the neighborhood is already impacted, as it is. And I don't see that changing anytime soon. And so that's the concern already that we have, is that more units that are going to be built in a neighborhood that is already extremely impacted. So the last two things, so what we're talking about, the two major concerns right now, is the lack of parking, and the traffic that will certainly increase in a school zone. As it appears, the building will take up the majority of the parking lot, or a great part of it. And so after actually looking at the plans there, it actually does, it looks, it looks good. And so that's really, it's something that I'd like to just applaud, applaud the architects on doing that, and saving as much parking space as possible. So working in education and in the community, I see that the neighborhood is already impacted. Many families, like I said before, are living doubled up. And we're looking at the church right now, that it is a small church at this point, but what happens and what will happen if it becomes a thriving church? Where will members park? As it is, anytime there's memorial services or any other services that a lot of people come to, the streets are all filled with cars, even if it's just a one-time event. And one of our greatest concerns in this lastly here is the fact that it is the last available property on Mason, down from the freeway on the east side of Milpus Street, that can be used as a plan to service the community. And I'm talking about the community of those who live in the community. It is unfortunate at this point, that there's so many children and families that aren't being serviced by a faith-based organization in that community. And so if the condos are built, my concern is that it will never be open to one of, one of the objectives that should be on there, and that's to service the children and youth in that community. And you all know already, and I'm talking as a high school counselor, we know the issues that are going on in our community with our youth in relationship to gang involvement and the gang and youth violence that's going on at this point. And so my hope is, is that the objective should be of the church to actually address that issue. And not necessarily, and hopefully, they can both be done at the same time. Maybe there can be understandings and agreements. But I would see that one of the objectives of the church should primarily be to service the community and those in need in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our last speaker is Betsy Kramer.
Good afternoon. I also live in the area about a half a block away from the church, and the church is a very good neighbor, I feel. But the neighborhood is impacted with cars and so forth. And I'm, and right across the street, there have been two, two stabbings within the last couple of years, one several months ago. But I'm here to speak specifically about the trees, and I hope that the pepper tree can be retained. It's, it's the only one in the neighborhood that I know of, at least, and I do walk the area. And I'm also, would like that the palm trees be retained. They're not nesting grounds for acorn woodpeckers, but they are granaries for acorn woodpeckers. And as I say, I live very close, and I watch the woodpeckers. So thank you very much.
Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the commission for questions first. I have a lot of lights on, so does anybody recall who was first? I'll tell you what, I'll start with Mr. Jordan, and we'll just work this way with questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm certain I wasn't first, but thank you. Mr. Gullett, if I could talk, start with you. For a building like this, I just need to be educated. Two-story, six residences, what are the elevator requirements, if any, or none?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Jordan, this project was reviewed by building and safety staff. They're charged with applying the building code, and this building does not require an elevator, and I don't know what the threshold is for a building that would. But it has been reviewed.
Do you know off the top of your head if, if that threshold involves a review of a specific restriction on a type of resident? In this particular case, it's seniors, rather than juniors? And does that, is that part of the review, or is it just a review based on some other criteria?
I don't know the answer to that question, but this project was not proposed as being restricted to seniors previously, and it was reviewed against, against that standard. I guess the short answer is, I don't, I don't believe the code differentiates, but Mr. Piker is probably a much better authority.
Go ahead, Mr. Piker.
Commissioner Jordan, no, a building like this doesn't require an elevator, because what it needs to meet is a certain percentage of handicap accessible units. In this case, 50 percent of the units will be accessible, because they're on the ground floor. So the assumption is made for seniors that many are able-bodied, in fact, and that a two-story walk-up, you know, is perfectly suitable residential facility. And yet, for those who are handicapped, you do have at least 50 percent available.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Gullett, on the, on the state bonus density concessions versus the requested mods, those are totally separate of each other, right? So in theory, you could take those concessions in the property and take it up and plop it down somewhere else in the city, where you didn't need the mods, and you wouldn't need the mods, right? They're two separate issues. Is that correct?
Yes, there are two separate issues. So if, if the mods, this project, if it didn't need the conditional use permit, development plan, or mods, your commission wouldn't even be reviewing it, essentially.
And then I was one of the commissioners who wasn't there Tuesday, but I was there jumping over the fence on Saturday. So I failed to see whether there was an adjacent MTD stop either on Mason or Volontario. Is there?
There's no bus stop that I'm aware of on either street front.
Okay. And then Ms. Plowman, could I ask you a couple of questions? Could you, could you help me, obviously, Daddy already said, we're going to have some people who are, who can walk up and stair, up the stairs. But could you help me with, with what a profile is of a typical resident, of a senior low-income housing residence?
Well, I think they probably, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Jordan, I think they probably vary from project to project and unit to unit. But the Housing Authority works with a lot of seniors, and some are able-bodied and live independently, and some probably have more difficulty moving around. But you'd probably see somebody in their 60s, living in a project like this, 60s and 70s. This is the type of project that they would get into. And it's seniors that come to the Housing Authority and get Section 8 vouchers. And so they work with the different applicants that come in to find the right units for those applicants.
You think generally, a car or no car?
I think it varies significantly. I think a lot of them don't have cars, because they're on, first of all, they're, they're low-income.
Right.
And they're, and they're seniors, and so they don't drive a lot. A lot of them do take the bus. I didn't look at the location, the nearest location of the bus stop, I probably should have done that. But it's fairly close to transit. I mean, you've got Milpus not that far away.
And then, but it'd be a tough presumption to say, often not a car, or often a car. It could be either way.
I think it's a mix.
Okay.
But basically, you have a code that says seniors, half your seniors typically don't have cars. And that's based on studies and analysis of senior projects.
And then I did, on Volontario, have to hop the, hop one of the gates on Saturday, thankfully, and made it back and forth without getting arrested. But is the, does the future foresee gated access on both of those streets when this project is done?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Jordan, those gates are both going to be removed.
Okay. And then, just a couple of design questions I had. And I wouldn't read into this where I'm going with this, but just because I get to ask the question.
Sure.
But was there any thought on moving the six units away from the perimeter of the property, and actually putting them as an addition around a courtyard to the existing buildings, rather than putting them out right on the property line?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Jordan, I think Daddy can maybe speak to that. I think we, this site was studied in great detail, because it's not large. I mean, it's just a little over a half of an acre. And so trying to figure out a way to provide some kind of privacy for the units, as well as maintain the integrity of the church in the way it was, I think was one of the objectives. But Daddy, do you have something you want to add to that?
I mean, only, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, only the fact that, as Lisa pointed out, we did, we went through just innumerable different layouts to finally arrive at this solution as being the best one. But I think important, you know, an important consideration with respect to the idea that you just mentioned was that we didn't really want to co-mingle the church activities necessarily with the residences. That was really a key thing ultimately, and that's why we ended up separating it and having a driveway in between.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Plowman, don't go away. I really appreciate you having met with Ms. Cardona. Ms. Cardona is here?
Her daughter.
Cardona, sorry. And am I to understand that all the issues she raised, she's okay with?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lodge, yes, she seems to be happy with the resolution, and if, she's nodding.
She's nodding, yes. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Well, because that was, I had a lot of questions about that, and I'm glad to hear you're going to be able to pull the overhang back, and, you know, fencing and all of that. Because her house is right, I guess, about six feet from the property line as well.
Correct, yeah.
And so I can understand her concerns. Understand the concerns for the, like, oh, well, and then the other thing, yes, I was the one that asked about, well, you know, why, as everybody on this commission knows, I much prefer to see tree, well, I think everybody in Santa Barbara prefers to see trees to asphalt. And so I'm glad to see that that is a possibility. We could do that, and actually deny the modification for going, being in the setback, but is that what we would do?
We could trade one out.
And, and then reduce the required number of parking spaces in the other modification. Okay. Let's see if there's anything else here. Oh, I understand the concern too, the gentleman who spoke. However, this does seem a perfect example of infill, another kind of needed housing. And there has been a lot done in that neighborhood for family housing through the Housing Authority and so on. So it seems, well, that's more of a comment, but anyway. All right, thank you.
Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Chair Bartlet. Two quick questions, probably for either Mr. Gullett or Ms. Plowman. When was the church built on this site? Was it the 50s? Was it, I know the church, it's, as an entity, is older than that, but I'm wondering when it?
The sanctuary building was constructed in 1956.
Oh, good.
But previous to that, there was, there was a church in, in this building. And then it moved to the new sanctuary building in 1956.
Okay. And then in, in the lands, this is about the palm trees. In the landscape plan, it looks like there's one palm tree, but in the picture, it looks like there's two in this. Is it two, or is it one that's coming out? Is it, what's the palm tree count for?
The removals are indicated right here. So there's three in this location. So two on either side of the new pedestrian path to the apartment building, and one adjacent to that parking space.
Three palm trees gone. Okay, all the palm trees go. Okay. So it's a little cluster of them, not just the one that is X-ed out for the parking space. And I would agree that the concession to what we'll call the parking concession, to put the, the two parking spaces there, and therefore cause the removal of the pepper tree and the palm tree cluster, would not be my first choice for a concession. And the, my understanding is that there, there is the ability to, to say a different concession should be, could be discussed. So am I right that we can trade the setback concession for a parking modification concession? Because I know in the past, when we've tried to trade stuff without notice, we get, we sometimes can't do it, because we didn't notice an additional parking modification for this meeting?
Mr. Chair. The, I'm not sure that Commissioner Jacobs is correct about the concession swapping. However, the proposal that you're discussing may be amenable to the, to the applicant, and, you know, and so we could have this conversation. You already have a parking modification noticed on this project anyway. To increase that by one space, I believe is the, would be the increase if the commission and the applicant agree on this, this swap.
What I'm hearing is two. So we already have noticed a two parking space, but what I'm hearing is additional two. So I'm wondering if that is available.
If someone had, if someone had a concern about the amount of parking on this site, they've been noticed that this application is considering a reduction of the parking on the site. And so I think that there's been adequate notice to have a conversation about a modification. What you're typically, when the council, or when the planning commission has a problem, is if there's no modification noticed at all. And then we start down that conversation. So I think there's been adequate notice to have the discussion of a parking modification. Turning back to the concession, it's the applicant may request the concessions. There is a limited set of circumstances in which the city may reject a requested concession. However, I think that you can have this conversation, if whether or not the applicant finds the swapping out of an increased modification would meet the same goals that they're trying to achieve with the concession.
In the dialogue I'm hearing so far, between the applicant and the commission, it sounds like the applicant is, is fine with this idea. So I'm not anticipating any resistance to that idea.
Mr. Chair, if I could, if I could add a little, we did have discussion about having the parking reduction as a concession. And the difficulty is that there's two different uses that you reduction as a concession, and the difficulty is that there's two different uses that uses parking lot. We have the church use and the new residences, and the concession is supposed to be required to provide for affordable housing costs, and we could have a situation where they remove pews from the church and then they would have a parking reduction. So, back to the noticing, it didn't state a specific number for the parking modification, so I think it would be appropriate, it would be available to the commission to reduce that further.
And in the applicant's presentation, parking demand would be met even with the additional two spaces withdrawn?
That's right, and Ms. Swanson is available to speak to that issue as well.
Okay, but it sounds like we can get there, and if we can't, then someone needs to tell us, because I'm hearing that that's the direction we're going, and I would hate for everyone to love that idea and then find out we can't do it, so that's why, that's my, we're in the question mode, and that's why I'm asking that question. The other question I have is about the CUP, because we are, we're doing our land use work here, but it sounds like we're also having the initial CUP public hearing, and the reason I bring it up is because through the Casa Esperanza project and through other projects, I'm learning a lot that I think is useful to know about CUPs, once it's there, it's there pretty much forever, and so today is the day that this entity is going to get its CUP, and that CUP will be there. And the reason I want to bring that up is because we've heard from the public that they're a little concerned about density in the neighborhood and about parking during memorial services, they're hoping for services that help children, and I just, I think that we've heard really one person talk about what would normally be the CUP aspect of the church and its activities, and I'm bringing it up because we haven't initiated CUP processes very often, and I just want to at least mark that moment in this process, that once this church gets a CUP, that's, it's there. The neighborhood will kind of lose its ability in many ways to reopen that discussion. Having said that, I think that senior housing is an excellent thing to bring into the neighborhood, and that eyes on the street, old eyes maybe, but eyes on the street are a good thing, and that that's a help to be across the street from a school. I think it's a good, a very good thing to have in the neighborhood. So, when we get to comments, I'll say more about that, but I wanted to just make sure we know about, today's hearing also approves the CUP. And we already talked about gates and driveways, so those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I missed a site visit on Tuesday, but I did make a site visit today and made myself familiar with the property, but one of the questions I had had to do with the school parking lot across Mason Street and whether that is restricted parking through a, some kind of chain link gate, or what happens on a peak use afternoon or Sunday morning at the church when the church is full and we've got these spaces? Where do the cars go? Can they, where can they park?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Justice, we actually had conversations with the school district about that parking lot, and actually were initially seeking an agreement to have, a long-term agreement where they might be able to park there on Sundays, and the school district doesn't grant long-term agreements like that because it constrains their future endeavors, but they did say you can, it's open, and the church is able to park there on Sundays, nobody is in that parking lot on Sundays, and as long as the school is there and operating, that's an opportunity for them to be able to use those spaces.
That's my question for the applicant. I guess the question I have for staff has to do with the conditions of approval, in particular for the conditional use permit aspect, and I didn't see anywhere in the conditions that spoke to the issue of operations, whether there were noise issues or parking overflow issues, issues that might have an impact on the neighborhood.
Mr. Chair, we didn't include any conditions to that effect. Well, the church isn't technically operating under a conditional use permit, the approval by City Council back in 1956 did do certain things like limit the number of seats and provide a certain number of parking for the church. I was looking through the city records, there aren't any complaints that I saw regarding the operations of the church, any nuisance associated with the church that hadn't been addressed, so staff hasn't included any conditions.
Okay, I'm just, I'm trying to think, we're adding a very beneficial use here, so it does change the nature of the way the site is used, and I understand the requirement for a CUP having a use that's not traditionally permitted in this R2 zone to allow for that, but I'm just trying to look forward to, a long ways away when there could be issues and similar to Commissioner Jacobs, to want to have some assurances in the conditions of approval that are, that pertain to the conditional use nature of this, I'll call it a mixed-use project, because it has an institutional use and a residential use, so I'm going to be listening to the rest of my colleagues as well as staff to see if there's some simplistic and elegant way to put some of that in there so that we all have a comfort level and the issues that were raised by members of the public have some kind of assurance in there. Thank you.
Ms. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question about the CUP for Fellowship Hall and that apartment. The apartment, if I understand this correctly, is counted as part of the residential project. Am I correct? Okay, so that will stay a residence? Yeah, and then the, so the CUP for Fellowship Hall is separate from the apartment? I need to understand how that relationship works, if there is a relationship between the two, or if it, the CUP covers the apartment, or...
The CUP is for the site. It's for, it's to have a church on the site.
Oh, I understand that.
If you look at the findings for the CUP, it does, it does speak to several issues regarding site use. The second-story apartment would stay, a change to that would be the limitation to senior, low-income.
Okay, thanks, that's what I needed to know. And could you put up the landscape plan, please? I just was looking at the parking lot standard to see if it's being met per, for trees and spaces, and can you tell me if that is the case? I'm reading from here, but I can't tell if those trees are on the property line trees, are they in the parking lot, or are they, that would be the trees on the far right.
I believe you're referring to the standard for finger planters in parking lots? Is that correct?
Yes, or for, you know, the triangular ones, for tight spaces?
Yes.
We do use those too, just to be sure that, you know, I'm looking for that.
So, staff and ABR did review the project against the parking lot standards, and finger planters are required if there's eight or more spaces consecutively and that doesn't occur on this site. There is also the requirement of five-foot planted area, but there is a potential for a waiver from that that ABR can grant, and they did in this instance, and we discussed that for the parking along the side.
So it's not every fifth space then, it's eighth? Oh, okay, I thought it was fifth. All right, thank you.
Mr. Justice had one more question that he failed to ask, and then I'll go to Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one last question of the applicant regarding the pepper tree along the Volontaria Street frontage. Is that so close to these parking spaces in question, both the pepper and the palm, that they, that they need to be removed if those spaces go in, even if they were spaces that were on pervious surfacesing?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Justice, yes, they have to be removed.
Thank you for your direct question, answer.
Okay, Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Gullett, I'm back on the conditional use permit. I see, you know, on page three in our agenda that the CUP is described as allowing church use, should be granted, allowing church use in the R2 zone. Is it that there's no other language referencing what Mr. Justice referenced as a mixed-use project here that needs to be incorporated into the CUP language because it's already R2, and so we're narrowing the CUP to just the church use allowance?
The CUP trigger is the, having the church in the R2. There's some zones where church is allowed by right, and that's not true in R1, R2 at least, so the CUP though could include conditions that apply to the entire site for the use of the site, because the commission has broad overview of the use of open space, parking configuration, and landscaping on the site.
Well, that's helpful to know, and when we get to comments, I would be interested in hearing from my colleagues as to whether or not you think that it would be appropriate and perhaps beneficial to include or to expand some of the expression of what's conditionally allowed under the CUP beyond the church use in the R2 zone. Mr. Gullett, the 19, is a 1956 City Council decision, in your opinion, would some of that language be appropriate to incorporate into the CUP if the commission desires to expand the CUP language that's referenced here?
I do think it would be appropriate, the number of seats of the church has been reduced dramatically from what was approved in 1956. It was originally approved with 232 seats, now it has the equivalent of 84, and the conditions don't specify the 84 in the conditions, but it does refer to the plans that are being considered right now. I think for clarity's sake, it would be, it would be wise for us to include a limitation on the number of seats in the conditions as well.
Okay, I think I'll consider that, just to let my colleagues know once we get to comments. Back to some other questions, and I think these are for Ms. Plowman. Could we take a look again at the proposed site plan slide? I think that's the title of it. Mm-hmm. I think there's another one that actually is entitled...
Was that the one in my presentation?
Yes, in your presentation. And from what I can tell, but please confirm this, this slide does correspond with the one page that we received at the site visit, right? The new one pager, Mr. Gullett, that's entitled Story Pole Plan, that you said was new and not in our packet, that's what we're looking at here, correct?
Well, this slide corresponds with the landscape plan. The change to the building is strictly the roof form of the building.
Okay, let me ask you some questions about the two-story, six-unit, and I was thinking of this as Mr. Jordan posed his questions. For those seniors who are living on the second floor, how many stairs and sort of, what angle of incline are we looking at going up to the second story?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, let me take a look at the plans.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, the stair configuration simply conforms to the building code, which is, you know, very specific about how stairs need to be designed, how wide a tread is, how high a riser can be, and what the variables that you can work with within, you know, certain constraints, and that's what these stairs will comply with. You know, we haven't done the working drawings yet, so at this point, it's still, you know, in the preliminary phase of that portion of the design, but they will simply comply with the requirements of the building code.
Now, with all the experience that the Housing Authority has in building for and caring for low-income seniors, have they provided any advice to you on, let's say, the risks associated with having seniors living on the second floor and, you know, just what comes along with that in that time of life and, you know...
Yeah.
Yeah, considerations, I'll put it that way.
To answer that question, you know, I've designed hundreds of senior units in different projects, and not only been the architect, but the developer of that kind of unit, and, you know, as far as two-story walk-up type configurations like this that are meant for, you know, seniors in a mix of both able-bodied and, you know, independent seniors and with some handicap accessibility, et cetera, there really isn't anything more stringent than what's already required by the building code, and in fact, recent code changes have made stairs, you know, the design of stairs even more specific and constrained to basically meet, you know, a wider range of needs than maybe had been previously met in earlier iterations of the building code, you know, with respect to handrails and riser heights and open treads, and that's, I should say, closed treads, et cetera. So, there's really nothing extraordinary required in this situation, unless you were, you know, specifically designing for frail seniors like the Garden Court facility...
Yes, I was thinking of Garden Court.
Where we have some different considerations that we've, you know, layered in there.
Well, one comment that perhaps it was Mr. Gullett made that piqued my interest, and correct me, Mr. Gullett, if I'm wrong, and what I heard, what I thought I heard you say, that Building and Safety reviewed this project prior to it being a senior rental project design.
Building and Safety also reviewed it following, yeah.
Subsequent to that, okay, excellent. Okay, then...
Commissioner Schwartz, I just wanted to point out that the Housing Authority reviewed the project and they didn't have any concerns about having a second-story element for seniors.
Okay, very good. So, back to the proposed site plan slide, maybe it was just the previous one. I'm interested in talking through with you the traffic flow and parking configuration. Let me ask you to confirm first, we have a new entrance or ingress only from Mason Street, is that correct?
That's correct.
So that's one way in?
One way in.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Yes, one way in. Then we have angled parking spaces, and tell me if I'm reading this correctly, are there seven?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yes.
So there are seven there. Are those designated for particular use in the proposed plan?
Those will be open for church use. We have designated these four spaces over here for the senior housing, so there's one, two, three, four, so these spaces would be identified for senior housing, that'd be the residential spaces, and the rest of the spaces would be open for church use.
And how does one enter into those parking spaces? In other words, are they parallel, are they...
They're perpendicular.
They're, oh, they're, okay.
I can see that it's very difficult to read on this.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm...
So you have two spaces here, so if you came through here... So you have two spaces here, so if you came through here, you could park here, or you could travel around this corner, park head in here, or park head in over here. Those are all, those are two, there's an aisle, and you've got perpendicular parking on either side of that drive aisle.
Okay, so one designated parking space on the, what would that be, south side?
Yeah, south.
South, for each of the, you know, for those who have cars.
Correct.
They'd be right there.
Correct.
And then there's just the one exit out by the, on Volontario Street.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, then I'd like to look at the landscaping plan, please. Talk through some things with you there.
You could use this one because it's essentially the same.
Okay, very good. I like Commissioner Lodge asked about the pepper tree.
Over here.
It's rare in the neighborhood, as I think someone confirmed, and I think it has a unique quality compared to the palms, these types of palms, in that it softens. It softens the look as you're driving by and walking by, and I think it adds an element of visual beautification, quite frankly, to that side of the property, and also, I think, screens very nicely that side of the building from those who are driving or walking by. So, and I believe Ms. Jacobs proposed this, perhaps if we could keep that, or, sorry, Mr. Jacobs, maybe someone else mentioned this, but some type of renegotiation here of keeping at least that tree and offering something else in the way of a modification. I think it would be a real shame to lose that, so if, you know, your client could work with us on that, I would appreciate. And then finally, the landscaping in and around the new senior rental complex. Can you talk to me a little bit more about what may be difficult to see from this slide as to what kind of visual screening and privacy for those residents will be afforded to them?
Right. I think in the initial landscape plan, they showed some medium-high shrubs along this area, and then some canopy trees. And basically, after we looked at it and met with the neighbor, we realized, you know what, these canopy trees... Yeah, you want to show that slide, Dan?
Let me see through.
There you go. These canopy trees probably are not the right tree for that spot, and we'll be working with a landscape architect on redesigning this, but we would remove those two canopy trees and then plant something in here that's sort of a tall, narrow tree that doesn't have a lot of canopy to it. So when I originally talked about this, we talked about either a malaluka or a stenocarpus, which are commonly used. In fact, stenocarpus was the tree we used on the Bath Street project for the Housing Authority to create the visual screen between the apartment building next door to the new residential development. So I think the idea is to have something that's probably reaches maybe no more than 18 to 20 feet in its full growth, but that it would really create a nice screen between the two residential uses. So the people who are on the balconies don't feel like they're looking into somebody's backyard, and the people who are living next door don't feel like a building is just looming over them without any kind of buffer.
So the height of the newly proposed trees that you discussed today with us would also provide some additional privacy for the...
Yeah.
The senior residents as well as the neighbors?
Correct, correct.
Okay, very good. And I'm wondering to a comment made by a member of the public if there are any partnerships or collaborations currently in place between the church and the school or the Franklin Center that does sort of bring together the spirit of the church and its purpose and the fact that it's a part of the neighborhood, as well as understanding some of the unique needs of the neighborhood?
Right. Well, the church is involved in a couple of things with the school. Well, we're involved with the Endowment for Youth, I don't know if you know about them, but their program where they do counseling and tutoring for kids. Then we also, once a year, we have a carnival for the kids in the neighborhood. And what we do in that carnival is that we, as a church, we go around and we talk to all the business owners in the neighborhoods, and we get donations from them for school supplies, and we supply the neighborhood with school supplies every August, the last. So we're trying to reach out to them, but it's not easy, some of them with the Spanish-speaking barrier, but we are trying our best to do that. And then I walk the neighborhood myself a lot and talk to the kids, and I talk to the people across, the teachers across the street sometimes also.
Do you have staff who are there part-time or full-time working with you at the church?
We have a part-time secretary that's there. She's there 25 hours a week. And then we have a, she's a young girl, she's like 25 years old. And then we have our janitor that is there intermittently throughout the week all the time, and then I'm always there, so.
May I ask, is your secretary bilingual?
Actually, she is. She is, yeah, she is.
I'm Spanish-ing, was she bilingual?
Yeah, she does speak Spanish also, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
We also provide food distribution periodically to the community. We did for three years provide...
Wasn't really prepared, but for three years, we provided periodic, monthly food distribution to about 160 neighborhood residents, including children. In addition to the carnival, we, well Pastor mentioned, we provide the school supplies, and we also during, well, he mentioned this, during that, when we're preparing, we go into the community and go into the Milpus neighborhood businesses, and not just there, but also throughout in Santa Barbara to get donations for the things that we provide during the carnival.
And could you tell us your name, please?
Oh, my name is Owanja Brown Lawson.
Thank you very much.
Our social concerns person for the church, so she actually goes into the neighborhood and finds out what the social concerns are, and so we make sure that we are aware of what's going on, and she works right now with the, what is that, the, the people that, for the, no, the guys with the, what is it, the gang problem, what is that thing that you're working with?
Well, yeah, the gang task force.
Yeah, she's working with that gang thing. And then I talk to these, you know, Milpus has a problem with the, with those, with the homeless, so I'm always trying to help them out.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I have groups of questions here, one set for staff and then for the applicant, and I'll try and be quick because I know Commissioner Jacobs needs to leave at 2:30, and she was hoping to participate in more than just questions, so. First for staff, in the staff report on page seven, it makes reference under the design review, or the front setback modification for the bicycles, makes reference that the landscaping has to go to the single-family design board. I'm trying to understand why that's in there.
That's an error, ABR has overview of this.
Okay. And then also, in the staff report, there's reference to the ABR minutes, and my particular packet was missing the most recent minutes, which are the August 9th, upon which all this is based. Were other packets, or other people missing those minutes as well?
I did, I actually checked the scanned version before the hearing.
Okay, they were left on the diocese, they weren't in the pa, okay.
Yeah.
I just now have it.
I apologize.
Great. Okay. And then, questions for the applicant. Given the discussion that we had at our site visit with the desire to perhaps save more trees and perhaps eliminate the concession request for that parking encroachment into the Volontario setback, if we reduce the parking further so that that's no longer a concession, is there another concession that would be beneficial to the project that you would like to substitute as your third wish?
Mr. Chair, I think what we would do is take one of the modifications and substitute it as a condition, I mean, as a concession.
But the modification, though, is for the bicycle parking for the church use, which isn't associated with the residential, so that can't be a residential concession, so that's why I'm asking if there's another concession that would be of benefit to the project.
I don't see one that we would all agree on necessarily. I think Dan and I had a debate about whether or not the parking modification could be a concession. I believe under state density bonus, you have, you look at the whole site and the development on the site, and that the parking that's required to serve all of that development relates to the residential use, and that in order to allow for those residences to be on the church property, you have to reduce the parking for the church. I believe that's a reasonable concession, and I think it's allowed under state density bonus. We disagreed about that, and so we moved that out of the concession request and moved it to a modification. We would like to move that and make that a concession. You may want your attorney to comment on that, but I think it's valid under state density bonus, and we've used it in other jurisdictions in a similar manner.
Right, well, that was exactly my next question, you know, is the bicycle parking, does that qualify as a mod or a concession? So, right now, you've got it as a mod, but if the other concession goes away, could it become a concession?
I think that there's a greater link between the actual vehicle parking than there is between the bike parking and the concession.
Mr. Vincent.
Mr. Chair, I'm confused, if the commission is prepared to grant the modification, does it matter whether we call it a concession or a modification?
Nobody has spoken to the modification, I can't say that they're prepared to or not, so.
We're open to having a discussion about that. But we're happy either way, if you grant it through a modification or through a concession.
Well, to kick off the discussion, and it'll be somewhat of a comment from me, so I can shortcut the process for Ms. Jacobs' benefit, my thought was your parking demand study alluded to parking demand of 19 spaces. If we eliminated two from year 22 to save the trees and to eliminate the encroachment of the parking into the setback on Valerio, we could also eliminate one of the seven spaces, the angled spaces on the south property line, to allow the bike parking to pull back out of that setback and eliminate the modification request altogether, and you'd be just parking based on demand. So is that something that the applicant would be willing to consider? And one of the benefits of that, and I think you would actually have to go to your real site plan sheet that shows all the setbacks and dimensions, the second stall in on the Volontario side is, it looks like maybe three or four feet further than the interior or the front yard setback. You could actually shift that entire parking lot up maybe three or four feet and really move the proposed duplex or the residential building along with it to enhance that setback on the southerly property line where you're so tight to your neighbors. You could just shift that whole component up.
We did study that. It gets really tight right in here. So basically, what you'd have to do in order to shift this building, and I have a slide on it because I thought this question might come up, let me flip to it. So this actually shows shifting this building two feet off the property line, and when you do that, you've got to move the trash enclosure here. You could plant another tree here, you'd lose this parking space, and you'd lose this parking space, and this parking space. So you lose three parking spaces, which means you're now down to 19, which meets the demand. You save this tree, you get another tree here, you would lose that palm still, but there's no reason why you couldn't plant a specimen tree right there in that setback. So that's the trade-off that you have. We wouldn't be able to move, lose a space over here to address the bike parking as you were indicating.
If you choose to shift this other parking.
If we choose to shift the building.
You could just leave it where it is, eliminate the first two spaces.
Exactly.
And eliminate the space by the bike rack without moving anything, and then just eliminate that modification altogether.
I just want to double-check on our plans to make sure we would be out of the setback there. And I think, Dan, as long as we're out of the 15-foot setback, the bike parking is allowed in the non, or does it have to be 30 feet back? Has to be 30 feet back?
It's a 30-foot setback.
It's a 30-foot setback. Let me just double-check that to make sure we can make it.
Okay.
I don't really have, like, one where I'd like to...
Okay, okay. I'll let you go first.
And then you guys will follow up on it, because it's just basically about operations.
Mr. Chair, it looks like it's a little bit tight, even if we took that parking space south.
So you'd have to comply with the 30 feet, and it won't get you there?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Great, well, that's it for my questions. I'd like to go to Commissioner Jacobs for her comments before she leaves, and we'll see if we can incorporate some of that into our motion. Ms. Jacobs?
Oh, thank you, Chair Bartlet, and thank you, fellow commissioners, for allowing me to just take a minute before I need to go. It is my children's holiday school performance tonight. I can't miss it, so that's why I'm leaving. First, I want to thank Pastor Shepherd and the spirit of your congregation for taking this on. Taking on land development in Santa Barbara is no small feat, as you now know. And you have a fine architect, and I think you've come upon with the heart of your congregation a very good project to help seniors and to make use of your property. So I fully support the project and its intentions. The, and you've heard me already about the trade-off with the parking, and I will leave that discussion to park at demand to the rest of the commission and to the ABR. But I do have one concern, and that is about the conditional use permit. As you expand the fellowship hall, I think it's going to be beautiful. I think a lot of people are going to want to use this hall. You may become the go-to place for quinceanera parties, you don't know. And I live near a place that has wonderful parties and amplified music, and let me tell you, it's not always the best thing to be a neighbor to. And so what I'm asking my fellow commissioners to consider is just a few kinds of descriptions about the kinds of things that Mr. Gullett brought up, which is to create a current snapshot of what the church operations are, and to make that linked to the CUP. And perhaps five years from now, we all get together again and check in with the neighbors and see how it's working. That would be my final comment, that I would hope that the CUP gets as much attention as the pepper tree. And with that, I leave you and wish everyone very happy holidays, and I will see you all very soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would echo Commissioner Jacobs' congratulations to the church for taking this on. And one of the strange contradictions in public comment, I guess, is what you hear is that to be more of a player in the neighborhood, but at the same time, don't cause an impact more than you're causing right now, which is kind of contradictory, but such is the world we live in. I would echo and probably lean on some of the not departing commissioners to help through the CUP process, because I agree too, that obviously that was one of my frustrations when we talked about Casas Baranza. And so what I'd be looking for help is how to, in the CUP, to separate the issue of vested gains on the property development part versus ongoing review of events and impacts related to the church, whether that would be a number of events, limits on people at the events, time, hours of operations for those events, those type of things. And I would echo Commissioner Jacobs' request that we set a period of time to have that reviewed again, and where clearly the level of review is not about vested gains, but about ongoing operations. So we don't get back into that question again of, we've given them this and we can't take it back, but it's more of a performance or an operations review. it back, but it's more of a, a performance or a, an operations review. And then I have a couple of comments. I'm still, despite Mr. Piker's reassurance, I'm still uncomfortable with the lack of an elevator, and I'm just going to be uncomfortable, because I recognize it's, it's a step back in design, and it's a step forward in expense. So, but I just, again, I say, I continue to have the same concerns. You put, you put a senior in today that can walk, and next year they can't, they just lost a, a residence. So, and I'm, I'm sympathetic to the, the development side of that too, and I recognize that that's, I don't think there's a, there's a win there. I'm also concerned with the condition that just has to do with the pedestrian walkway down to Mason, or Volontario, and the lack of, of what I would consider would be the prime aggris, which would, for, for me, which would be to Mason and back to the, back to Milpus Street. And wondering if there's something in these configurations that we're playing with and moving the building or playing with the parking, that somewhere down that property line, or somewhere in front of the, in front of the parking, there could also, and then wrapping around the building, there could also be some type of designated pathway that leads out to Mason, rather than kind of pushing everybody over to Volontario and then having to walk all the way around the property to head back towards what would be considered downtown. And then, I would anticipate that equally, that people living there may want to go to the actual church structures for services, or to visit, or, or whatever. And I could see some type of articulated pavement or crosswalk-type designation between the two buildings, cutting across there to the entrance where the, where the steps and the ramp are. Yep. And, and that, you know, that, that would just be a comment. I know you can do that with different pavers or something like that, or maybe pavers isn't the right thing for, for access for that age demographic, but, but some type of accommodation that clearly marks that as a, as a path. And then again, I, I, you know, in, in response to a couple of the, of the letters we saw, again, I would, I would throw my support. I think this has such a negligible impact on the neighborhood and is a positive improvement. I think this is going to improve your facility, the existing church, in a, in a way that it needs improvement. I think it's a great thing that you do for a demographic and the society, the older, low-income people. And I would support Mr. Chair, either one of the several mutated scenarios we've seen so far about the parking. I can get, I have no problem getting down to 20. I have no problem getting down to 19. And whichever way that goes for concessions versus mods, I would be supportive of that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I concur with much of what has already been said by my, my colleagues. Bottom line, I think this is a good project in a good location with a good design. And it's a, clearly a community benefit. It provides housing in a clearly needed segment of the community, and being a Section 8 project, it's, it's going to really be felt. It's, this is not something that we think it's going to be good, and then it, something else happens, and we have unintended consequences. This is exactly the right thing to do in this, in this part of town. I think the, I appreciate the, the refinements that have been made to respond to your next-door neighbors' concern. I think that shows real, you know, a good neighbor policy, which the city likes to encourage. I'm, like others, I'm okay with the reduction in parking by one or two, possibly even three spaces, if that's what needs to happen to preserve that pepper tree. The palm is a separate story. It may or may not be worthy of, of losing of, a space, given the concern, but at the same time, if that space frees up pervious surfacing and some vegetation, that's going to make this project just a little bit better. So I'm, I'm supportive in that way. I think the concessions are appropriate. I mean, I think it's going to result in a better project. If you went with the, the two-unit approach, where you have three clusters of duplexes, it's going to consume more land. It's going to, it's going to put those two-story pieces in other places that are, may not be as compatible as they are now. So I think this is an elegant location for the uses that you propose. One thing is that bringing six units in here increases the activity on the site, and that in and of itself makes this a safer place, because you have people that, that live there seven days a week, you know, if not 12, maybe 24 hours, you know, whatever. I mean, if there's, there are eyes on the street and eyes on the lot. That's really, really important. If that palm does go, and, and it's, it's feasible to plant a new tree on the Volontario setback, I think that would, that would speak to some of the concerns we've heard from one of the speakers today. I think adding the number of seats and doing a scan of what the existing operations are now as part of a condition of approval, as a guideline, then augment that, as Commissioner Jacobs said with a five-year review report back, gives us much more confidence, because I think the CUP should reinforce the good behavior that happens and could happen on the site without compromising the unintended consequences. You've got to protect against those unintended consequences with the CUP and have the vehicle to do so. So, the only other question, comment I've got would be the possibility of, as Mr. Jordan suggested, just kind of expanding on that, maybe some differentiated pavement from the residential piece out to Mason Street in, in the parking area, or however you choose, because the natural gravitation is towards Milpus as opposed to, in the other direction, except for going to the schools and that type of thing. So, I would leave that up to ABR. That's a design issue. I don't want to get into it. I don't want to, you know, pick this thing to death. I think it, as I said to begin with, good project, good location, good design, you know, let's, let's go with it.
Commissioner Lodge.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vincent.
I'm sorry, I, I don't typically like to interrupt in, in Commissioner's comments, but before the, the idea of a check-in gets more momentum, I do want to speak to it. The idea of having a check-in that unless there are articulated, objective standards that would be, that the, that the operations would be compared against in that check-in, I just can't see that being consistent with a conditional use permit. You have to have a standard that reflects the operation of this site. You'll need to have a standard that is objective in its, in it, that it can be calculated and, and verified objectively, either proved or not proved. It is, it would be unfair to have an applicant go forward with a project with an undefined, open-ended, you know, gotcha clause. And I'm not saying that that's the commission's intent, but that, that would be the way that an applicant could have such a situation if there are not objective standards for it. So what I'm, what I'm speaking to as far as objective standards, that there's a description of, of their uses, and, and there, those would be the allowed uses. At the same time, the commission has, we've heard from the public, and I've heard from the commissioners, a desire to have this site be more involved in its community, more involved in its neighborhood. Yet, if we just look at the snapshot of what they're doing today, we preclude those opportunities. So, I'm trying to figure out how, how we're going to go down that path, and so as the commissioners think about the, the conditions that you would like to see for this conditional use permit, please keep in mind that we need to be thinking about objective standards that can be verified factually, and that also don't preclude the things that you're wanting to see achieved with this, this project.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I couldn't, I couldn't agree more.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll start with, in response to what Mr. Vincent just said, I, I would hate to see us get into a thing where we're going to have to figure out, you know, word by word, you know, the, all the things that might happen in the future, that we can't possibly predict. The church has been there for, how many years now?
We've been around 100 years.
I know, but in that location.
In that location, we've been there 10 years.
10 years. And I haven't heard anything yet that says that it's been a problem. And they've been doing things like the carnival, food sharing, you know, doing other things to work with the community, and I think, it just seems to me, you've been doing an admirable job. It certainly is an excellent project. And I'm, for me, the standard conditions that are in the CUP would serve. So, I would like to see the project approved.
Thank you very much. Ms. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I, I agree with my colleagues, and I do want to say a couple of little things. I appreciate the sign you have. It's a nice, modest scale, and really, there's so much about the church that nestles itself into the neighborhood. It doesn't, it, it doesn't assume a grandeur, and I hope that as you proceed through this, that you keep that charm of the, of the modesty of the sign and that, and that scale of, of not being obtrusive in the neighborhood. The other thing, I, you know, everybody's got, this is their minute, but I spent a lot of time on ABR in my younger days, and, you know, I would, I would make a suggestion that, that your enhanced pavement or your, or you would consider a ribbon driveway as a nod to the residential in the back, some kind of, which would soften it up to the neighborhood, and it would just break up that, you have still got a lot of asphalt, and it would just kind of break that up a little bit, and, it's just a thought. Also, the fence, there's a long fence proposed to a residence, and I think, consider a good neighbor fence. A fence where there's either two good sides, or the good side goes to your neighbor, so that the neighbor's not dealing with an unfinished fence of such length that, that they could never afford to landscape or make nice. So those, that's, I don't have anything else critical. I, I think, I think that, I think that the project is terrific. I think we've, I think it's a, a very kind solution to a big problem, and, and it's in keeping with your church's mission, so, you know, congratulations to you for having your message and your motive both meet. That's great. And those are my comments. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to start by saying that if the rental complex was not designated for seniors, I might have other concerns in terms of additional traffic impacts, possible noise impacts, but I couldn't be more pleased that this is for seniors. As we all know, we have such a lack of, of housing, among other critically needed resources for seniors in our community, and I think that fits in perfectly with this being an infill project, that it's going to be permanently designated as low-income through the Section 8 program. And it is an excellent use of somewhat unused a portion of the property. I think to lessen the, the portion of concrete that's, or paved-over portion of your property is an improvement. And I think overall, and in a short period of time, the community is really going to come to appreciate the project, as I think those who are living on the project will appreciate being in the community. And I also think that in putting seniors here will help with the intergenerational mix of the community, which I think makes for the most vibrant community, and probably the safest community. So I think for all of those reasons, I'm so pleased that this project is before us. Now, in terms of the CUP, and in listening to Mr. Vincent's additional counsel to us, I don't want to overcomplicate the CUP and either tie your hands or our hands. We want to be appropriate and reasonable. To bring in, as Mr. Gullett has commented, maybe appropriate, some of that language from the 1956 City Council decision, as well as, I'll throw this out for my colleagues' consideration, perhaps some of the core information in terms of your oper, your current operating days and hours, which I think are in table, table two and three on the September, in the September 16th dated document of ATE. I'm not sure if that's the only location for this information, but something like that, that doesn't cap you necessarily, and doesn't require that you come back to us to review these operational details, but sets forth an understanding between us as to what they are vis-à-vis our decisions and the ABR's decisions to support these sorts of thresholds that we've come up with in terms of parking demand, setback, landscaping, and so forth. So I, I would be interested in that type of language in the CUP, and I'm comfortable with the concessions that have been put forward, so I'm ready to move forward, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments. I think you pretty well know where I'm coming from based on my questions. I tried to roll a few comments, and I, I would be looking for the elimination of the two parking stalls closest to Volontario, so that we can specifically save the pepper tree, and perhaps either save the palms or replace with specimen trees, but we can leave that to ABR, and I'm fine with leaving the rest of the parking alone. Realize we can't eliminate that modification request on Mason anyway, even with eliminating a stall, so that way we would still be parking slightly above the demand that was outlined in the staff report. So, I think this is a, a great project, and I, I hope it can serve as a model for, you know, other sites around town that really have, you know, underutilized asphalt that could be put to better uses, especially for seniors and rentals. So, I applaud you for taking this on, and we certainly don't want to stretch it out, so I'll be looking for a motion from one of my colleagues. And I see Mr. Justice has his light on currently. Mr. Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move approval of the project and the commission's findings for the modifications outlined in the staff report, as well as the conditional use permit and the development plan, with the changes to the conditions of approval as outlined by staff, with a reduction in the parking spaces provided by two further, two further spaces to be on the, on the Volontario side, and the addition of a specimen tree in the setback area. And finally, to encourage the use of permeable paving, paving in the ABR review of the project as, as you and ABR feel is appropriate. I don't see a need to add any additional language regarding CUP conditions after thinking this through, listening to the, the rest of my colleagues. This is, I've been a use here for a long time. There, there haven't been complaints. I say we let it be and see what takes place, and if there's problems, we'll have to deal with them.
Do I have a second or?
Second.
Ms. Lodge. Any further discussion?
Just, I'm assuming that the only change on the findings needs to be on page 11 under findings. The first one, change of the modification to provide, instead of saying 22 automobiles' parking spaces, we'd say 20. Is that correct?
Correct. And, and staff recommended that additional change for the dedication of that area by the, by the corner for the landing.
Yes.
Great. Okay, any further discussion? Ms. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to make sure that the minor comments regarding the good neighbor fence, especially in the, they explore ribbon driveways, be forwarded to the ABR.
Right.
Thank you.
Hamish.
I'm sorry, one question, Mr. Chair. Perhaps this goes back to Mr. Jordan's recommendation. Do we want to include? Do we want to include in the motion a reference or a direction to ABR to consider some sort of a highlighted or visible
of a highlighted or visible path connector? Do we need to put that in the motion or just in, having it be in the comments?
I think the motioner has it in there obliquely with the enhanced paving and leaving it up to ABR.
Okay, very good.
So unless the motion maker wants to add anything about the fence, the motion will stand as it is, so. Okay, well, I call a question. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Great, you have a project. It is appealable in 10 days and thank you so much for your application.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
I just want to say, thank you so much. This is, this is my dream to get this done and thank you so much.
Thank you for participating. Okay, we will go to our second item, which is a discussion item. And this is the draft fiscal year 2010 through 2011 capital improvement project or program. Yeah. Give staff a moment to get set up here.
Chair Bartlet?
Yes, Mr. Codel.
Christine Anderson, the Public Works Director, will be giving this presentation.
Great.
In a minute.
Good afternoon.
Please go ahead.
Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Christine Anderson, Director of Public Works. And I'm here this afternoon to give you an overview of the draft six-year capital improvement program, which covers fiscal years 2012 through 2017. The document includes all of the capital projects represented throughout the city departments. We have representatives of many of the city departments here. A few of them did have to leave for three o'clock that they were confirmed for. And I also wanted to acknowledge Kathy Kiefauer from the Public Works Department, who's our Public Works CIP Coordinator and responsible for compiling the document and putting it together. The development of the CIP is intended to create a six-year planning horizon of capital needs throughout the city organization. It provides the opportunity to balance off the funding availability for capital programs, the identification of needs, and the implementation steps necessary for projects to be developed and taken to construction. It also is a document that identifies unmet, I'm sorry, unfunded needs that are representative of infrastructure deficiencies. And so it's both a planning document and an information document relative to the condition of infrastructure and the balance between funding availability and the actual funding need. The planning processes that take place throughout the organization feed into the identification of capital projects. And so in the document itself, you'll find on pages five through 13, listing and a brief description of the numerous planning documents and reports that are generated throughout the organization and become the basis for the identification of capital projects that implement the purpose that, and need identified in those planning documents. And as you'll see, when we go through the description of the specific projects themselves, we have attempted to link the planning document or report that generated and identified the need for the capital project specifically. As I mentioned, the prioritization of the capital projects in the CIP are balance, a balance of the available funds that we can identify and project. And then the identification of maintenance and capacity issues that are necessary for us in the maintenance of our infrastructure. We look at, for example, projects that would likely allow us to defer larger maintenance costs that would be incurred if we're not able to replace or repair an infrastructure component. We look at capacity deficiencies that affect the ability to deliver service or that affect service that's used by the city residents. We also look at policy directives that identify needs for capital improvements throughout the city and also legislative and regulatory changes that require us to respond in a capital way. As you look at the pages reflecting the CIP projects themselves, this is a description of how the pages are laid out. So I think there's a, there it is. Is there a? Thank you. So up in the right-hand corner, you'll find the department or program that is the first identification of where the project is stemming from. Then you'll find the project title and the identifier for each CIP project that's in the document. And then in the body of the document, of the page, you'll see the description that addresses the purpose and need, details of the project itself, the type of funding that may be indicated, any particulars relative to that project that are available at the time. And then the referenced, as I mentioned earlier, to the specific plans or policies that are related to the project and are the source of, of need or basis for identification of an implementation strategy. Then the funding sources are identified down and run along in these columns and rows. And then finally, there's an area on the lower portion of the project page that's focused on the estimated operating impact. We attempt to look at whether a particular project creates a reduction, is a replacement, or increases the level of a certain type of infrastructure maintenance and repair. We've, we're attempting to use this as a way of capturing the impact over time that capital projects may have on the city's operating program. So obviously, if we have something that's a replacement of an existing facility, pretty much on the same size or scope, then often there can be an actual benefit to the operating budget because we have a more cost-effective maintenance situation. If it's an expansion or an increase of facility for a particular infrastructure component, then that points to, over time, an impact that requires greater resource for the operating side. In the six-year period covered in the document, we are showing total funded projects of roughly 150 million. The total unfunded projects are a little over 336 million. And then the total project cost represented in the six-year plan is approximately 486 million. So as you can see, roughly a third of the projects in the six-year program are listed as funded and roughly two-thirds are unfunded. If you go to the first year of the program, which is essentially the year that feeds into the upcoming adoption of the city's operating and capital program, that shifts. So we have about 60% of fiscal year 2012 projects listed as funded, about 40% listed as unfunded of the total roughly 69 million for fiscal year 2012. But of the unfunded projects, these are oftentimes projects that are identified as good candidates for grant funding that we anticipate will be available to us or will be available for us to apply for in that fiscal, fiscal year. So we still are looking at a potential for implementation, even though they're currently listed as unfunded. We only put a project in as funded if we have an approved grant, an approved funding source, or we know that we have a projected level of funding that we are allocating across those projects. The other elements that are reflected in the unfunded project area may be critical needs that aren't funded at this time and may not be good candidates for grant funding, but we need to highlight them as a, as a critical concern. And then a little about the funding sources and the restrictions. In the document, pages 15 through 27 really try to lay out in more detail the types of funding that are available or used for capital projects. And they fall into these three categories: general fund, enterprise fund, and internal service funds. So the general fund, we'll talk about in just a moment. The enterprise funds include airport, downtown parking, creeks, golf, water, wastewater, waterfront. And we have identified and, and given a brief description for each one of those funds and types of funding sources that feed into them. So what we're hoping to be able to provide in the capital improvement program document is a one-place source for information that supports and relates to the capital program. So you're not having to go to a variety of different documents to find information that feeds into an understanding of a particular project. We should be giving you the description, the source of how that, that project was developed, and also the types of funding that we anticipate would be used for it that you'll see described within the document itself. The ICS funds, the internal service funds, are those established to recover costs for operating, maintaining, and upgrading or replacing the city's internal support systems for computers, for internal city buildings, and for the motor pool and vehicles and equipment associated with that. The general fund, you're familiar with, but this is just a pie chart that gives a picture of the sources of funding that feed into the general fund itself. And those general fund revenues are used for citywide operating expenditures, obligations, and also feed into the city capital program. We have not identified in this draft CIP an allocation of general fund monies for any given fiscal year. And the reason for that is that that is developed as part of the budget adoption process that we go through in the spring. So we identify the needs that our general fund needs and the actual amount that's allocated for general fund capital projects is part of that process. You will find the, for the other funding sources, an allocation that's projected for fiscal year 2012 and in the subsequent years, but most specifically for the coming fiscal year that we'll be developing an operating budget as well. The other thing about the financial element of capital projects, sometimes you'll find a portion that's funded. Those are often leveraging dollars. So for example, if we anticipate a project would be a good candidate for grant funding, but will be a required match, we try to identify how those match monies could be allocated for the project to be able to be a successful candidate. And then in other cases, we know we may have formula allocations for different types of funding that would also require a match. And so you'll find that as an element when you look at the funding for a particular project. It may be partial funding or it may be identified within the body and description of the project itself, that there's an anticipated funding source and this is the match that would be required by the city. As I mentioned, we also have the unfunded projects. You may recall in 2008, the City Council accepted the, or formed the task force for the infrastructure financing analysis that was intended to look at the capital needs for the city as a whole. And we've referenced that document as one of the references within the draft capital improvement program. But that task force looked at the infrastructure condition and capacity needs going forward and provided some recommendations on policy direction for the city going forward in trying to address those unfunded needs in its future. And then, of course, almost as soon as that report was, was prepared and, and accepted by the City Council, we hit our economic decline. So unfortunately, we have not been able to really take the advice and guidance of that task force work and implement it strongly. But there were policy guidance, recommendations that have been implemented in the financial strategies for the city. And we do anticipate continuing to use that work from the infrastructure finance task force as we go forward and hopefully, our economic health improves. I'll briefly walk through the structure in the, in the CIP of department and program capital projects. This is the administrative services page. It's located on page 32 in the document and begins there. But essentially, administrative services projects are information service and infrastructure upgrades supporting the computer system technology for the city as a whole. The funding sources are generally the ICS fund that supports the capital side of the computer systems and the general fund. We do have some significant needs that are unfunded in that area, some major replacements of software systems that at this time, we do not have the expectation we will be able to support, but they are needs and they are a concern going forward if we are going to be able to maintain the reliability of our, especially financial management systems. The airport is primarily FAA grants and airport revenue sources that are restricted and limited to the airport itself. As I go through this, each of the departments that, and programs that have a commission or board that provides oversight and advice to the departments has reviewed their portion of the capital program. So for the airport, the Airport Commission reviewed the CIP elements on October 20th. Community Development has a permit processing system and records management upgrade need identified. And once again, that's a general fund and permit fee-backed funding source. So until we actually have an allocation of general fund, that's an uncertainty. For creeks, that is another of our dedicated enterprise funds. And the creeks restoration and water quality improvement Citizens Advisory Committee reviewed the creeks projects on November 17th. They are primarily Measure B and grant-funded projects and address water quality and creek and watershed improvements. Fire projects are general fund improvements and we are looking at fire facility maintenance and upgrades. We've had several projects with Station 1 and the headquarters building that have been funded in the recent past and we're continuing to focus on opportunities to upgrade and improve the fire stations throughout the city. Library, the library board reviewed the proposed capital projects relative to the library on November 11th. And there are a variety of funding sources that include donations, trust funds, and some ICS funds that are allocated along with RDA-funded projects and then general fund. So there are different leveraging and combinations of funds that have been available for the types of projects that address library facility upgrade needs. There will be a focus on the main library in the coming CIP for at least the ICS and some of the RDA funding. And then the Neighborhood Improvement Task Force is a group that I, is linked to the neighborhood needs. And this is the area where the, we're coming out of that task force identifies where where capital projects can enhance the ability for neighborhood services and concerns to be addressed. Those are generally funded through, once again, trust funds, donations, general funds, ICS facilities, and RDA, and could be CBDG, so there can be a variety of sources involved in those as well. And the Neighborhood Improvement Task Force reviewed those projects on October 20th. Parks and Recreation, the Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed the capital projects for Parks and Rec on the 17th of November. These are mostly general-funded projects, but there are grants that Parks and Recreation is eligible for and also contributions that may fund portions or all of projects. And once again, since there is a particular general fund requirement for Parks and Recreation projects, we don't have the allocation of general fund identified as a given in the 2012 capital project list. Police Headquarters Replacement and Records Management System upgrade are some major capital needs that are identified in the CIP. They would be general-funded projects and a portion of RDA funding, actually, for the headquarters project as well. Public Works Downtown Parking, the source of funding is the Downtown Parking Fund, and the Downtown Parking Committee reviewed the capital project list on October 14th. There are several parking lot and garage maintenance upgrades that are projected in the Capital Improvement Program, and we continue to keep and upgrade the existing assets primarily for the parking program. In the general fund area, these are the facilities maintenance programs and the ICS projects. So the fleet services upgrades are funded through the fleet ICS program, and the facilities maintenance projects are a combination of general fund and ICS program funding for some of the major capital upgrades. The Public Works Streets and Transportation projects were reviewed by the Transportation and Circulation Committee on October 28th. This is probably the program area you're most familiar with because it's also traditionally the area that we brought forward after recommendation from TCC has occurred. These are projects that are funded primarily through Streets Capital, which are identified in more detail in the draft CIP, and there are also grant funds that these projects may be eligible for. It's a wide list of repair and maintenance of existing transportation facilities within the road right of way. And this is just an example of where we are on the, yes, the review that occurred with TCC. You've seen this list before in your previous reviews of the Capital Improvement Program. So it lays out the budgeted UUT funding, the underground utility, the utility users' tax portion that's attributed to streets maintenance, the Measure A, half-cent sales tax contribution to streets, and discretionary funding in total is listed on the far right. So we have a number of projects that are identified on the list. Then this is the grant fund. So we have Prop 42, which is a formula-based allocation to local jurisdictions, and then the bridge grants are another area that's a category of funding that we've been successful in being able to gain support and be able to project that we will be moving forward on a number of the bridge replacements affecting Mission Creek. And then, the Local Streets Transportation Program, there's a catch-all for a number of different program areas, but this gives you a snapshot of the primarily bridge and pavement maintenance and bicycle improvements that are grant-funded or have dedicated funds allocated toward them. Wastewater, the wastewater commission, Water Commission, I'm sorry, reviewed the wastewater and the water capital projects at their November 8 meeting. The source for wastewater capital projects is the wastewater fund, and there are a number of collection system and treatment facility maintenance and upgrades. So the plant at El Estero and the collection system and pump stations throughout the system are included in this capital program. And then in water, it's the Kater Treatment Plant and the Ortega Plant and Recycled Water Plant, and also the distribution system that supports all of those treatment facilities. We have both the water fund and a state revolving loan fund that has been applied for to support those capital projects, and as I mentioned, the Water Commission reviewed these projects on the 8th of November. Waterfront, their projects were reviewed by the Harbor Commission on September 16th. The funding is a mix of the Harbor Preservation Fund and Department of Boating and Waterways, their DBA loan, so there are a number of harbor and wharf maintenance upgrades and program needs identified in their list. So that concludes the overview of the program, and if you have any questions, as I said, we have representatives from many of the departments here, and we'll be happy to respond to your questions.
Great, thank you very much. Is there any public comment to what has been presented? Okay, I'll close public comment and come back to the Commission for questions. Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a few questions. The first is on the Police Headquarters replacement. Could you just give us a snapshot of where we are with that? I had the opportunity, by the way, to tour the facility some months back, and so am eagerly following our ability to remedy that for officers.
Yes, thank you very much for the question. Commissioner Schwartz, the Police Headquarters building has a long history, and you're probably very familiar with it. It has been evaluated in the past because of the capacity constraints. As you know, we lease space in the adjacent Annex Building to support the needs of the staffing for police right now. As we went into an evaluation of the building, it's been about two years ago, with the notion of trying to upgrade the locker room facilities, that was the primary target for modifying the building. To be able to do that kind of an improvement, we needed to see if the HVAC systems would be capable of dealing with the enhancements that were going to be required to deal with the air exchange and the problems with just the locker room. And from that point on, it grew. The problems with the building, it was built in the 50s, it has systems that have not been replaced since the 50s but have been added on to or have been modified over time. So we know that there is asbestos and lead in the HVAC and a number of the elements supporting the mechanics for the building. So the direction from City Council had been to upgrade the HVAC system to be able to support not only the locker room remodel but also the needs for the building as a whole, because there had been numerous HVAC additions and add-ons. There were like 10 systems in the building itself. As we got into looking at that requirement, because of the asbestos, we would have been relocating the entire police operation to allow that to safely occur. We also took the opportunity to look at the structure itself, and that revealed that the building designed and constructed in the 50s was no longer deemed to be suitable seismically for conditions that we could project going forward. So that initiated a seismic review of options that could be brought into play for either upgrade or modification to the existing building. We will be meeting with the City Council right after the first of the year, and we've got an agendized item to have a tour of the building and also walk through three different options relative to the site at Figaroa and the ability to either modify the existing building with no change to the actual footprint itself, looking at some options that would remove portions of the building and allow us to rebuild in new construction, and doing a complete removal and rebuild on that site. And so it's a large price tag at this point. We don't have a funding source that could support it, but it is, what we're really looking at, I believe, is trying to get a game plan of what steps do we want to be moving toward, and then how to get there will have to fall from that.
Do we know if we have to completely rebuild, or if that's the direction the City Council goes in, what that cost is estimated to be?
We're looking at $40 to $50 million. That's the range that I would say we're anticipating we would be needing to deal with at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
My other question is about the Neighborhood Improvement Task Force.
Yes.
You had a slide on that, and I know it's somewhere in our package. Do you know what the breakdown is of the various funding sources that are highlighted on that slide that support the NITF projects?
Let me pull that out for you. Okay, if you look at page 102 in your document, I think we had an error in our slide. It looked like the funding identified was for the prior slide, and it got carried over. It's primarily general fund and CBDG funds, so it probably is not going to include some of the, I think we had grant funds and RDA funds as I was looking at the presentation. But if you look at page 102, because it's primarily general fund, they're listed as unfunded at this point until we know how much of a general fund allocation and what priorities are going to be used to allow us to address those needs.
Do we have any federal ADA-related monies that assist us in improving the walkways and crosswalks that I've been seeing around town where there are ongoing projects?
CBDG funds are, we're allocated about $50,000 annually for improvements to the sidewalk and the access area, and then we supplement that with our, we had Americans for Recovery and--
The Reinvestment Act?
Yeah, yeah, the ARRA funding. We were able to put a number of the priority needs that had been identified by our access committee in place this year with those funds. So we kind of did a catch-up of a number of years that had been identified and that we had not been able to fund previously.
And just from my own education, does, is it Public Works that oversees the ongoing maintenance of those newly configured and landscaped intersections?
Yes, generally speaking, we have, some of the median and median island and landscape maintenance areas are handled by Parks and Recreation, and some of them are handled by street maintenance. It's kind of a blend, but for anything that is an island, we do not look to the adjacent property owners for that maintenance. That is handled by the city.
Okay, okay, very good then. My next question is about grant source trends and leveraging in general. Are you seeing, kind of with the fluctuation of our economic times, any significant swings in the grant sources that we are able to tap, either new or those that are kind of vanishing for us?
That's a good question. I think we are, I think we are seeing a continuation of a number of the programs in the transportation area, for example. Those have been a little more reliable, and the bridges are a good example of that, I think. If there are other areas I'm not as familiar with, for example, parks grants may not be as available, given that it's more of a general fund character. But I think the other goal, as I've said with the document before you, is to do our best to identify what we would expect to be good candidate projects for grant applications. So they've been vetted, they're out in the public's eye, and if an opportunity were to present itself, we can move nimbly to apply for those funds and be able to point to an adoption process in the document that says this is a project that's been identified as needed, this is a project that's been identified as supported by the city, and that is often a really important element in making that application successful.
Well, your department has been just so active and robust and successful in going after grants. I mean, we're so fortunate, especially right now. I think it's really putting a Band-Aid on a lot of critical projects for us, which brings me to my last question, and that's deferred maintenance, and I think I brought it up earlier this year. It's one of my main concerns, because I've actually seen it cripple a city in Northern California. The cumulative effect was such that they will never be able to recover. So I'm just wondering, sort of as maybe an overarching summary you could give me as to where we are with deferred maintenance and what can we look forward to in that regard in terms of the critical safety projects?
That's a very good question. I think that the best answer I could give you is that in the areas of transportation, the street maintenance, and in some of the areas of the building maintenance, for example, we've been much more aggressive about trying to establish a baseline of understanding of need. So we have the assessments in place to show what the current condition is. We have the ability to forecast more reliably what those deficiencies will cost over time if we're not able to address them in a timely way. Because as you point out, many of the infrastructure systems, if we're able to catch them in repair or make the replacements to portions of a system, that will extend the useful life for 10, 20 years. If we're not able to make those lower-cost repairs, we may very well be pushed into total replacement, which is multiplier times the cost of those initial repairs. So being able to have that type of information is an important part of being able to move and make priority decisions about allocating those resources. I think we're not in an ideal position, but we're not in the worst place. There are certainly communities that are behind us in trying to establish and understand those maintenance needs. And I see Nancy approaching. I know that we've had to defer maintenance in a number of the park areas for the last, at least the last couple of years, and before that, there was a challenge, unmet needs. So I would say in the last couple of years, we have not kept up with even the level of maintenance that was in place prior to 2009.
Before Ms. Rapp comments, I just have one specific question for you, and I know this was an Army Corps of Engineer project, and it's the Castillo Street, well, it's the underpass there, and I guess I would call it going south towards Cliff Drive and then Cabrillo in that far right-hand lane. I'm just going to say this because I have a moment. The potholes are very, very dangerous now. I don't know exactly what needs to be done. I'm just kind of putting this on a list for, I would suggest, pretty immediate attention because however they, however they perform the project, it's coming up, you know, the asphalt's coming up, and I think it's a matter of time before someone, as everybody's going 20 miles an hour, blows a tire and it creates some significant traffic accidents down there, if not worse, because there are pedestrians and bicyclists that are, you know, throughout the day.
Let me clarify at this moment that that is a Caltrans area of maintenance responsibility, and I know Caltrans is going through their preparation for their upcoming pavement maintenance work, and we will definitely check to see if that's hopefully in their plan for the upcoming year.
Like that for them as--
Exactly. But we do coordinate in as much as we can those areas that are city maintenance responsibility and recognizing that we have jurisdictional differences where Caltrans comes into play, but for the traveling public, they don't know that, and they don't see the asphalt color change, so it is important for the community. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Lodge. Oh, Ms. Rapp, were you--
Ms. Rapp, were you going to speak to that a little bit later? Okay.
Chair Bartlett, Commissioner Schwartz, and fellow planning commissioners, I did want to respond to Commissioner Schwartz's comment on, you know, are we seeing a change in grant funds? Because for Parks and Recreation, we have seen a tremendous decline in availability of funds. And, you know, we were blessed to have the state bonds funds of Prop 12 and Prop 40, and we did a lot as a city using those funds to enhance some of our parks and facilities. But all of the state grant funds that are available now, we don't qualify for as a community, and that's very challenging for us. And we were involved in the beginning as they were discussing the requirements and talked about the need for different criteria. But unfortunately, we just don't qualify for those funds at this time. And also, I think, you know, the unfortunate thing with the ARA funds was very specifically, Parks and Recreation was restricted from applying. Now, we have been able to work very creatively with Public Works and get some of our hardscape needs done, you know, because with the sidewalks and the parking lots and things like that. So we've been creative. But I think that for us as a community, the lack of funding available on that capital scale for Parks and Recreation is going to be an increasing challenge for us in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question really was essentially the deferred comp, deferred maintenance one. And I gather from what you said, Ms. Anderson, that it's, we're sort of hanging in there. We're not as bad as some other places, but we're, it's such a, you know, the old adage, a stitch in time saves nine applies so well here. But we're managing to hang in there.
Thank you, Commissioner Lodge. Chair Bartlett, I think the challenges, we have a very diverse capital program, and there are a wide variety of types of projects that are identified in the document. And I'd say we're in better shape in some areas and we're more challenged in others. So I would say in those areas, for example, in the enterprise funds, where we tend to have a better ability to be able to project and plan to have capital monies available and we can prioritize the use of those monies, that we're in better shape. It's not that we have met all of our needs, but we are better able to catch things and program the work so that it is efficient and a more effective use of the funds. It's the areas that tend to be general funded or that have more, they lack reliability in our ability to be able to forecast and plan and move projects forward to be able to implement, that we tend to be more at risk. So buildings are one of those areas where we do try to capture and plan for maintenance and repair of the buildings themselves and to try and have, through our ICS fund, an opportunity to capture some capital money to be able to replace some of the systems, the roofs, the repairs that allow buildings to continue to be reliably used. But when we get to a point where the building itself needs to be replaced, we don't have the funding sources. And police is probably the biggest example of that situation, where the useful life of the building has reached its limit with a number of the systems, and we don't have a mechanism or a real approach that we know will be suitable to address those problems. So it's not a one-size-fits-all in terms of our infrastructure needs. And I do think that we have been able to, as Ms. Rapp was pointing out, throughout the city, take advantage of opportunities for grant fundings, whether it's the waterfront or the airport or some of the other areas where we have leveraging money to be able to access those types of grants, and have been very successful. With the ARA money, it saved us last year from what could have been a very difficult year just in maintaining our pavement management programming. So that was a Band-Aid that allowed us to get through that year in a way that otherwise could have put us behind. If we don't get ARA funding, which is not sounding like is likely in the coming year, that could be a real problem for us. And so we'll have to monitor that very carefully. But it's the challenge of a city that is pretty well built out and has infrastructure that is, in many instances, over a hundred years old. So-
The, referencing the Police Department building, that has been an issue for, I would guess, some twenty-five, thirty years, because I can remember talking about it way back then. And little things like, it doesn't have an elevator, or has one been-
There are several ADA challenges with the building, along with the structural concerns and the HVAC system is, if you talk to people who work in the building, I'm sure that they'll share that there is not a real comfortable situation for a lot of the times of the year when we have problems with either the cooling or the heating. So it's, it's an older building. It's over sixty years old and heavily used. There's, there are a number of staff plus a number of types of facilities unique to the Police Department that are all housed within that building. So it's a challenge.
As I recall, there have been, there's been at least one bond measure on the ballot, which the voters unfortunately turned down. I'm going to, if I may, Mr. Chair, make a comment while Ms. Rapp is here, that it's not a capital improvement project, but recently took a train trip north and then coming back, all of a sudden, it was very green around the train tracks. And I said, oh, we're back in Santa Barbara. And that, you know, it's not capital stuff, but it sure is infrastructure for this city. And it's so important, I guess I should make this speech to the city council, but maintenance of our street trees and the park trees is just also extremely important to this community. Thank you.
Mr. Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first question is kind of two parts. And I was curious, are the priorities assessed differently for, or applied differently for enterprise fund projects versus general fund projects? And you've done a really good job of outlining with the bullets on page four, kind of how you go about thinking through which you get and which you don't get. And the second half of the question is, how do you balance a highly leveraged project in terms of getting good matching dollars where it's a lower priority project, but it gets a much, much, much larger match versus a more needed project that doesn't have the same level of match, particularly when we're squeezing down on the budget? Is there, is there logic to that?
Commissioner Justice, Chair Bartlett, and commissioners, that's the art, not the science part of this. You're absolutely right. Those are the challenges. Because taking your last question first, if we have a strong expectation that we could leverage the ability to get grant funding because it's a particular type of grant that has a unique qualification, and we happen to have a project that would match that and would likely be able to be successful because it's so unique, there probably aren't other agencies that would have as good a project as ours. But there's a match required. The trade-off that we have to evaluate, and that's part of the review process, is looking at how large is the match and what are we not able to do that we would have done as a priority with that money, because we've used it to match what might be a nice-to-have or a desirable project. I mean, certainly, everything in this document, I would say, is a project that has a need of some sort. Or it's desired by the community, or it's part of something valued as a program, but it may not meet the test of holding our infrastructure together and being able to assure that we have safe and reliable use of our infrastructure. So that's a trade-off. We would definitely not want to go overboard on just leveraging projects that would be nice to have at the expense or the risk of not being able to keep a focus on maintaining our existing assets. So it's a balance. And we try to keep that in mind. And for the enterprise funds, there are a variety of priority drivers. First and foremost, I would say we are responsible for maintaining the existing assets. So whether it's the airport looking at their pavement maintenance and the need to ensure that the reliability of the runways, taxiways are in place as a priority, or it's our transportation systems where we need to ensure that we're keeping the pavement maintenance and trying to avoid the deterioration level, as was pointed out, that can occur. Those are priorities. But within wastewater, for example, and primarily the water treatment program, we do have regulatory issues that are drivers in many respects. So we need to be changing our treatment processes to be able to meet those new regulatory requirements. And oftentimes, it involves a multiple-step process to evaluate the systems and look at the types of options that would be suitable to address that regulatory need. And then once we've selected the option, we go into the design and the capital project that implements that strategy. So it can be two or three-year, longer-year process in some instances. But those are really driven by the regulations and the directives that we have. And so that is a unique situation.
Okay. Last question, I think goes to either Ms. Rapp or Ms. Zachary. It has to do with Prop 12 and Prop 40 funds. They were frozen in 2009, and it was a huge hit to the city. Are, should we be expecting that to take place once again as we get into the Sacramento budget talks? And is there, do we just have to let them figure it out and then react accordingly? Or is there any contingency plan to deal with that type of eventuality?
Chair Bartlett and Commissioner Justice, we've actually been thinking about that. We are, at least in Parks and Recreation, in a fortunate position that we've essentially spent all of the money that we would have gotten from Prop 12 and Prop 40. Our last grant allocation was approved about three months ago, and the project will be complete in two months. So we're crossing our fingers that we'll get those done. We're currently not eligible for any of the new bond money, as Ms. Rapp indicated, because of the way the legislation was written for the type of communities that would be eligible for it. So that's where we are with that.
Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question on, when you use, like on the roll-up pages and you get down to the bottom and something's unfunded, but then you look at the itemized pages and they all have a source. What's, what is actually the default for unfunded with no identified source? Is it general fund? Is it, how does that decision get made that something's unfunded and, but you have identified a source on each of the individual pages, but it really has no identified source?
Commissioner Jordan, Chair Bartlett, and commission members, it probably is going to depend on the program area that you're looking at. So for example, if it was a transportation project, or it was a project that was identified as an enterprise fund, those would all be tied to those types of funding streams that are available only for those types of projects. The general fund would be the default for any of the department projects that are in general-funded categories like the libraries, parks and recreation, fire, police, those types of categories that if we don't have a grant or a particular funding stream, that RDA funding or something like that, that could be eligible for those particular projects, most likely the general fund would be the default.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Larson.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I noticed as I was going through this that we have actually got, for the Central Library, some funding that looks philanthropic to me. And I, this is probably more a comment than a question, but I consider Santa Barbara to be a giant jewel box of treasure. And we have a huge amount of stuff to manage. I mean, when you consider that a city that is under, what, a hundred thousand or at about a hundred thousand or so, with everything else we do, we also manage four miles of coastline, we try to maintain adequate open and decent spaces for citizens to meet in. It's, it's so thoughtful of people from the private sector to come forward and help us out. And we've relied on philanthropy in other times and been gifted very elegantly. Sterns Wharf was a, was a private, privately funded public project at one time. So I'm hoping that the city is able to, or maybe my question is, are you, do you have recruiters for this? I don't know how, do we have like a foundation? How are we, how are we reaching out to private donors at this point? You know, it certainly would help parks. I can think of, well, we've had it. We've had the Douglas Family Preserve and Ealing's and all, lots of good stuff. But I hope there's more good stuff forthcoming. And that's basically my question and a comment. So I know it's tough times, but when you see Shoreline Park fall down, you know, there's, there's an angel in the wing somewhere.
Yes. Ms. Macias and Ms. Rapp are very engaged in the areas that you've mentioned. So I'm sure, happy to respond.
Thanks.
I suggested to Irene that we both come forward and talk about this because as department heads, we've actually been working very diligently on this particular aspect. And it is, we see very clearly that, you know, there are private foundations that can be a resource both for capital needs and for programmatic needs. And so we are spending a lot of time about with foundations. For myself, it's working with the Park Foundation and working with other local foundations to let them know of our needs and to see how we might build partnerships and accomplish some of the things that we need to for the community. It is a challenge. We face always, unfortunately, the attitude that, you know, the city should be taking care of its own and, you know, there are so many needs in the nonprofit community. But there are still opportunities, and that's what we go for. And so we actually are spending a lot of time on developing those opportunities.
Commissioner Larson, Chair Bartlett, and members of the commission, my name is Irene Macias. And I did want to acknowledge the gifts that we did get. Fenton Davison was a resident and left the library a million dollars a number of years ago. And we are now, we've actually, over the years, spent small sums of it just for operational needs, but now have decided to commit these funds to this project, which is really a huge need. We also have the Peggy Maximus Trust Funds that are given to the library in perpetuity. And we get over a hundred thousand dollars each year and identify a project. In the next couple of years, we're going to dedicate the monies to this project. But we do, are the beneficiaries of trusts, but those come to us, or bequests out of the blue. And so as Nancy said, we've decided to foster a more organized effort to go out and look for funding. But I did want to add that the Junior League is embracing a partnership with us to fund the children's library that we're planning. And I know that Commissioner Lodge was down in this space yesterday, and that is the space that we're planning to dedicate to the new library, children's library.
Irene, thank you. Is that it, Ms. Larson?
Yes, thanks.
Great. Well, I appreciate actually being able to see the full list of capital improvements. Well, I appreciate actually being able to see the full list of capital improvements. I know we have seen Mr. Wozniak numerous times, and we understand what's going on with the streets and bridges, but to really get the full view of what's out there and what needs to be maintained and what needs to be acquired, it's daunting. This is quite a stack. I felt like I was doing my taxes or something, but I'm happy to hear that there's sort of an artful side of how you have to put this together. But, you know, when you combine the art and the spreadsheets, it reminds me of creative accounting, and it scares me a little bit. But I hope that we can, you know, lend some help in terms of how we prioritize projects, both in terms of need and opportunity. I think there's a lot of those things that are on the list that are maybe one-time opportunities, and you don't want to pass those up. So, you know, some of the ones that jumped out to me were the acquisition of the Army or the National Guard facilities, some of those that will be future jewels in the city if we can get there. So I hope that we can, you know, keep those in mind and not just, you know, maintenance only because we need to build for the future as well. So it's a complicated balancing act, and I -- maybe there's a way by looking at these sheets, but it's confusing for me to know when were they most recently updated because there's so many separate projects in here. And it sounded as if this was the wish list prior to the recession hitting. So it'd be nice to know how current all of these are and how that's being updated relative to what's happening with the economy so that we can really prioritize our needs and be ready when funding sources are available. So it's quite a juggling act.
Chair Bartlet, I could respond to that quickly. We do go through and look at each of the projects when we bring it forward as a draft for re-adoption. So in the last two years, we've done an annual update to the CIP, which is unusual. But we've also been making some pretty significant changes to the document itself in an effort to both make it more usable, more readily understandable, and to also be more transparent about the linkage between the planning process and the development of needs through plans and how they get implemented in the capital improvement program. So that connection and the work that the staff in each of the departments has gone through in the updating of the description of the project, the anticipated cost associated with the project, recognizing the scope and the environmental issues or whatever other needs may be required to be met that would have a cost associated and a timeline associated with the project implementation are represented in this document, I would say. The first two years are the ones that we spend the most time trying to be more specific about the opportunity for funding, the definition of what the project's scope is intended to be, and what that project cost is intended to be able to encompass. In the last four years, those really are more of the plan of what we anticipate will be needed that will change as we bring it forward for actual funding and implementation. But it gives us the planning opportunity to be able to try and prioritize where we anticipate funds will be available and how they best will meet the city's priorities overall.
Great. Well, thank you. It's an incredible job that needs to be done, and it certainly needs, I think, everybody's attention. Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments. When Streets Capital was here, I think I led the charge enthusiastically for some type of better priority system, and I think John's already alluded to that today. And then, like Commissioner Bartlet just said, now I look at this and go, oh, my God, this is a little intimidating. But still, I'll be happy to say again that it isn't, I'm sure, exactly what it's supposed to be, and it serves your purpose. But just as somebody who doesn't deal with this every day, it's a little soulless. It doesn't really speak to me on, especially within general fund issues, what's a priority when you're going to compare renovating a fire station versus renovating a library? And how does that affect me as a resident and/or as somebody in this position wanting to have an opinion on that going forward? And I don't know how you'd get there because this thing's just a monster, but that's just my impression of it still going forward. This is a much bigger apple than the Streets Capital one, and I was, again, much more happy to make that suggestion then than I am now. Ms. Rapp and I have had years of conversations about this, and I know Parks and Rec has made huge gains. In fact, I think they have a person who's even working on philanthropic and corporate donation issues right now. But I could see also that type of model for this or other operations also being extended to the waterfront or the airport. It would seem to me that those two particular areas might have people with particular interests in those areas that have funds available to participate in a focused, meaningful way, too. So I would hope that if somebody like that ever stumbled across your way in the government world, that you'd have a method to be able to actually entertain that. And then, someday, I imagine the economy's going to turn around. And I -- there's a couple of my favorite departments in the room, and I would hope that they and the rest of your departments are prepared and at the table immediately when that happens, and that you're prepared in advance of that happening, that you have your documentation in order, maybe you have some pie-in-the-sky type of priority system that resonates better with community members, but certainly resonates well with the city administrator and the council, so that when those revenues start flowing again, you're ready and in place to get back on track with some of these things. And in fact, you should maybe even be pre-negotiating triggers or thresholds, that when revenues reach something or a trigger can be met, that particular needs would start to be addressed, and you can come to those agreements in advance and not be queuing up with all the rest of the people who want to compete for the dollar. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You mentioned taxes. Staff has mentioned going to foundations for funding. The city has two that I know of, tax-deductible places where you can make an end-of-year contribution of all the other requests. There's the Park Foundation, that's P-A-R-C, and then the library, Friends of the Library. Are there others that I don't know about?
Not that I am aware of, Commissioner Lodge.
Okay, well, those are a couple of places that are in place, but it's beginning to sound as if the city needs to develop a development department or development staff. Thank you.
Mr. Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know I've festered Mr. Wozniak for a couple of years now on getting more than just a cluster of things you use to prioritize. And I guess it's because different departments have different metrics that they apply in how they prioritize their own projects. But speaking to Ms. Anderson specifically, I think the way you've articulated these last six bullets under types of capital needs on page four of our staff report provides us with a single-file line of priorities that make the most sense to me in terms of taking health and safety needs, reducing city liability as the top priority, and then maintaining assets as a next priority, because it helps make the budget process more understandable to the average person. Mr. Jordan has talked about transparency, and I think others have here as well. And while it may not be possible to have one final answer, so to speak, I just want to say that this makes tremendous amount of sense to address it in this particular way, particularly in times of extreme financial constraints, because it just lays it out beautifully. And I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. If I could just comment on, these are very valuable comments for us, and I truly appreciate your thoughtfulness in reviewing the document. We will take these away and work on some modifications. What I'm taking away is, for example, I think we can enhance the executive summary and description of how the documents used, perhaps to better lay out how the trade-offs of different types of projects, and especially with different types of funding, are considered and looked at citywide. It is a pretty massive document when you look at just the fact that we've got every project with a single page identifying the unique characteristics of that project. But to take the step back and understand how it fits is something that we're really trying to work toward making more available and understandable. So that, we'll work toward that. I think the notion of perhaps being able to identify, should the public be interested in contributing or participating in the support of capital needs, these are places where that can happen, would be something that we could identify within the document. So it's there if people have an interest in participating in a trust that exists or a foundation that exists. And the understanding of how to make it more comprehensive to the general public who are not intimately involved in capital project priorities, that this is the way it fits relative to the community's view of what's needed and how public money should be spent as a priority is the other element. I think we can work on incorporating into the front of the document where we hope people are able to pick it up and read in an executive summary format an understanding of what this is supposed to be representing. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate being able to review the document, and we would hope that this would be the beginning of an ongoing process. And I'm not sure what you see on a go-forward basis as to whether this would be an annual review or something stretched out further, or if it would be triggered by certain needs or opportunities that arise, so.
Chair Bartlet, we believe that this will be going into the preparation of a two-year budget. So we've been in a one-year budget cycle for the last two years, and during the two-year budget cycles, we updated the CIP every two years as well. So assuming we could do a two-year budget, we will probably be updating the CIP in two years as well. And that's, we look forward to this opportunity to look at a comprehensive review of the document, to see your view of how all of these different planning documents that are really sort of under the general plan itself are being implemented or used as the tool to identify implementation of capital projects. So we do look forward to this as a regular part of the adoption process for updates to the CIP.
Great. Well, thank you so much for the presentation. It was pretty enlightening, and I think there's still a lot of homework left to be done. Is there anything else that you need from us at this point, then? Great. Well, thank you.
No, thank you very much for your comments and your support.
Okay. With that, we will try and wrap up our meeting with the administrative agenda. First would be update on the staff hearing officer from Ms. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had, I have two to report on, December 1st meeting and December 15th. December 1st was pretty routine, just mods and nothing outstanding. The 15th, however, did involve two marijuana dispensaries, and Mr. Cotto was present for that. And one was denied and will be appealed to us, and the other was okay. So what we're going to anticipate will be seeing the, it's the Milpus one, correct? No, I'm sorry, De La Vina. I always think of Milpus, but it's De La Vina. The De La Vina marijuana dispensary will come to us with various concerns. And that's it.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other committee or liaison reports since our last meeting? Ms. Lodge.
Yes. From the Water Commission, I have had a couple of deja vu experiences lately. There was discussion at the November meeting of something called the pass-through agreement. And I'm sitting there and thinking, pass-through agreement? That's something that I worked on 20 years ago? And it turns out it was, or is. And what this is, while I was in conversation with Jim Stubchair, who was the county head of the County Water Agency, and we're talking about declining, we had desilted Gibraltar sort of as far as we could go. Gibraltar had to be seismically strengthened, and when that was done, it was made big and strong enough to hold an additional height to it. But then we got into a little problem with a bird called Leesbells Vireo, and one thing and another, that didn't go anywhere. But in the meanwhile, Gibraltar has been slowly or quickly silting out, and what happened, silting up. And with the Zaca Fire, it lost 22% of its capacity. In my conversation with Jim Stubchair, we were talking about where the water could be stored, and Kachuma often has excess capacity. And so I said, I would be perfectly happy to trade 1,000, maybe, acre-feet of water at Gibraltar for 800 acre-feet assured water at Kachuma. And he looked at me and said, you would? And I said, yes. So it's a long story, but anyway, it involved getting the Warren Act amended in Congress and trips back to Washington to lobby on that. That prohibited federal facilities from being used for anything but federal water. So, and of course, that became necessary also for state water use. So that was changed so that we can do it, but it hadn't been implemented until now. But with the Zaca Fire and this additional reduction in storage capacity, it is being implemented. All of the parties to Kachuma signed on to it 20 years ago, and now, but they're sort of saying, wait a minute. They're not so sure. But the city is in the fortunate position of being able to say, look, you've signed it then, and, you know, this is the way it works, and we're going to go that route. The city, there's so much going on with the Water Department, with various studies, and they did a phone survey to see, in looking at ways that there might be able to be additional conservation, they did a phone survey, and I think 415 people, with about 13 minutes per interview, in the city water customers. And it was made clear from the beginning that this was a City of Santa Barbara water survey. And they were asked questions about their water use, and were they conserving, and did they think they could do more, and so on. And one of the questions was, and this is, you know, completely agree, completely disagree, and then, you know, in-between, you know, somewhat, so on. Anyway, one of them was, my water provider is mainly concerned with making money. And 36% agree with that statement. Well, that leaves another roughly two-thirds that don't agree with it. But, you know, the public should know that the water rates are based on recovering the costs of providing them. And actually, the first tier, the lowest amount, is, or at least it has been, I don't know if it's still the way, it's actually sold for less than the cost the city to produce. But as you go up in the amount of your usage, it gets more and more expensive. And so then, the city is making money, but it only, it balances out to keep the city financially solvent. And the enterprise funds do a little better because they can set their fees to recover their costs, you know, like when it comes to capital project issues. Most people feel that they're really doing everything they can to conserve water, but when you ask them, when they're asked, you know, what they do, a common thing in response was, you know, well, I turn off the water while I'm brushing my teeth. Nobody mentions the outside, and that is the big place where more water conservation can be achieved. And so this is all, you know, leading toward, you know, educating the public and seeing where we can go with that. And there was conversation at the last Water Commission meeting, which was more deja vu, talking about, again, about desilting Gibraltar or raising Gibraltar, which, again, because right now, it's sort of serving as a debris basin for Kachuma. But, you know, it's, capacity is really being reduced. We had, there was a report from the, on CCR, Kachuma Conservation and Release Board, which is the four South County contractors is the four South County contractors to Kachuma, and the Kachuma Operations and Maintenance Board, which is all five contractors, and includes the Santa Ynez Water District, which you may have heard referred to as ID Number One. And there's still, you may have heard, and there's been a little issue about the steelhead and how much water is going to be released and so on, and the, they're expecting a decision by the State Water Resources Board by June, and they're waiting for a biological opinion. It was like, the last one was, I don't know, five years ago, and sort of the time has gone, and so now they're waiting for another one. And it's, you know, it's Fish Passage Projects, and National Fisheries is involved in this, and the feds decided to reopen the whole, as I mentioned, the whole biological opinion issue. So, they've wanted to combine the two agencies, COMB and CCRP, but with all these uncertainties, they just had, and the changes and the delays and so on, they haven't been able to do that. It would be more efficient to do that. And then, of course, you all heard about the second barrel that's needed in case of, you know, possibly either an earthquake or in the summertime, the one barrel, it's the tube, the pipeline that carries water from the end of Teclo de Tunnel down through Santa Barbara to, Modecito to Carpinteria. And in summer high-demand months, there simply isn't quite enough capacity in it either. And that now, there was an agreement on that, but Galita now is saying, well, why should we subsidize Carpinteria? Carpinteria has the highest water rates around, and they decided to opt out of paying for their share, and Galita is now concerned about, you know, questioning why they shouldn't pay their fair share. Last night was a Water, Airport Commission meeting, and there was a report from the Transportation Safety Administration, person in charge in this area, and he started out by saying, well, I'll tell you what I can, but there's a lot I can't talk about. So, the things went very smoothly with the additional screening, actually, despite, even around the country, despite all this outrage about these screeners or the scanners. And no, they don't save the images, and they will be, of course, in the new terminal, they will have all of that, that equipment, and people are generally accepting them. And the gentleman who was speaking said, you know, there's kind of an antagonistic relationship now between the passengers and the TSA staff, and they're hoping to turn it more into one of, well, you know, help us, you know, and if you see something suspicious, let us know, and that kind of thing. And it initially started as a, you know, just sort of through the checkpoints, when people were checking in, you know, making sure nobody has anything that they're not supposed to have on their body or in their carry-ons or what have you. But now, it's more of a focus on keeping the entire airport secure. So, I guess that's the end of my...
Great. Well, thank you. You've been busy.
Tried to talk fast.
Okay. Before I adjourn the meeting, I just want to say it's really been a pleasure to have been chairman of the Plan Commission this year, and I'm happy to be back for another four years, albeit not chair, but it will be good to be here with all the same commissioners and really have the continuity as we roll into next year, and hopefully, we will have a lot of things to review, which would be a pleasant change for all of us. So, with that, I would like to just wish the audience, you know, happy holidays and happy new year, and we'll be back sometime next month, once we figure out how the agenda shakes itself out. So, with that, the meeting is adjourned.